All right, thank you. It's been a while since we've all been together. Thanks for joining. It's 6:03. I'd like to call the January 11th, 2021 Situate School Committee meeting to order via roll call vote. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblom?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
He isn't there.
Gates, yes? Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Couple of things want to mention. I like to say it's at some point in the meeting. In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12th, 2020, town Situate public meetings shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded and will be posted following the meeting. It is also on Facebook Live. Public comment will be made via Zoom. The chat function will be turned off. Seth, can you make sure that is done?
I'm on it.
All right. And if community members feel more comfortable, they can email me, pgates@sit.org with questions now or at any point in the future. Again, thanks for joining. It's been, I think it's been about four weeks since we've last been together. I hope everyone's doing well. The school committee collectively hasn't been together since then, so it's good to get everyone back. This is really a fully remote meeting. We're all meeting from our homes. The schools are closed and thought it was appropriate to do so. We'll adjust that. Potentially, we'll stay at home for the foreseeable future, but this is a fully remote. We're all at home, none of us are at the schools. With that being said, we'll kick it right off into celebrate student learning. Dr. McGuire?
Evening and Happy New Year, everyone. When I started as principal last year, one of the things I wanted to do was put together a group of student leaders to serve on a principal's advisory council. This is very important to me because the school culture impacts how our students perform academically and the experiences they have socially emotionally, and also ties into our mission of enabling students to be contributing members of their community, the multicultural and global society, and to enable students in the present to help build them in their lives as contributing adults. So with that in mind, we vetted a number of students and received recommendations from student teachers and counselors and have put together this group. I have a couple of them here who are going to address school culture, but they also have made a video which is kind of stating their beliefs and the hallmark of work that we're doing together this year, so I want to share that with you first.
Student Advisory Council aims to establish an environment of thoughtfulness and accountability in an effort to stop the spread of intentional or unintentional hate in the Situate High School environment.
Our goal as a student advisory council is to advocate for empathy and understanding of others in our school and community.
Create a safe and inclusive environment for all students.
It's more than just creating and understanding, but being able to respect, help, and educate one another, forming relations all over the school.
To be empathetic in our school environment is to understand that you don't know what everyone is going through. Everyone has different lives and is in different situations, so you should always just try and respect everyone as much as you can.
To me, being empathetic in our school environment is being aware that we may only know one piece of each other, the piece of ourselves that we bring to school.
No matter your background, the color of your skin, or how you identify, we deserve to be respected and appreciated for who you are.
To be empathetic at our school means to expand your mind past pre-existing beliefs and being able to understand and recognize people's unique opinions, backgrounds, and situations in life.
We should be able to have every student on the same page, no matter what their views are.
If we were all more aware of the fact that our peers are complex people with aspects of their lives that you may never get to know, I believe the school environment will be more equipped to treat each other thoughtfully and empathetically.
What it means to be united in the school system is that when we have problems that come up, we together as a school work together to overcome them, and we're not all separated by grade or group.
Putting aside our differences for the greater good of the school.
It means fighting against hate or intolerance present in our community in order to create a place where students feel comfortable and safe.
We should be able to address larger problems and gain input from the student body, listening to their opinions and making rational decisions based on those opinions.
We work together as one team, as one school.
Focusing on what brings us together instead of what keeps us apart.
The Student Advisory Council is our way of getting something done for ourselves and for the community.
The Principal's Advisory Council is a group of SHS students who've come together to progress the school's culture. Parents and students are invited and encouraged to bring comments about SHS's environment to any members of the council. We will cover any concerns in our bi-monthly meetings. Thank you.
Thanks for allowing us to share that. I'd like to have our Student Advisory Council members, who are also your school committee members, speak to that video and the work that they're doing as well.
Sure, I'll start. Credit to that video to Duncan McConaughey and Evan Halevi, they did such a great job putting that together. As you saw from the video, Dr. McGuire's Student Advisory Council is primarily committed to going back to the deep roots of that any school issue stem from, a sense of community and understanding about one another. We've talked about the curriculum of younger grade levels and how those early on lessons and interaction shape how we feel about one another today. We've talked about the natural separation of underclassmen to upperclassmen and how that impacts the mood of the community on the day-to-day and in the grand scheme of high school. We've talked more generally about the core values of the school community and how those are and can be further acted upon in the school community. Johnny?
Thank you. And for this upcoming semester, the council is first addressing the issue of forming stronger feeling of community between upper and lowerclassmen by delegating members of the council to each freshman homeroom to discuss school issues and create relationships across grade levels. We believe that if students had genuine established connections across each grade level, then our school would grow stronger in unity and understanding of one another. Also, as a freshman, being shown support by someone who has been in your place before and who cares about you and the community is such a welcoming and comforting feeling. Thank you.
Recently, as everyone's mentioned, the SHS community has been exploring many mechanisms of community betterment. As Celia mentioned, the Student Advisory Council is working to create and support student relationships and to establish a space for collaboration with administration and pursuit of community progress. Students are also working to understand social issues like bullying, mental health, racism, sexism, homophobia, transphobia, and more, in clubs like Alex Not Bystanders, the Anti-Racism Club, GSA, and even just in daily conversations with peers, parents, and friends. So there's still much work for Situate students, parents, staff, and administrators to do in creative and creating an inclusive community. There's a widespread sustaining energy to do this work. Many students are excited to learn from and collaborate with the DEI director and are eager to embrace her work with curiosity, kindness, and courage. With continued community support, our willingness to pursue restorative justice and empathy as our foundation, the Situate community will make our environment a safe space for everyone.
So we know that positive school culture leads to positive academic outcomes, and I believe that the Student Advisory Council, made up of upper-class student leaders, can model and exhibit the knowledge and skills, attitudes and beliefs, and actions and behaviors that will build our positive school culture for everyone to experience at SHS. Thank you.
Well, that was, um, I don't know what to say other than I'm really, really proud of you, Dr. McGuire, and all the students that are part of this group. It seems, you know, everything that's transpired over the last, I don't know, 12 months to 12 days to a couple of days, this is exactly what our high school and our district needs. It gives me so much confidence, positive outlook that our kids, those that were in the video, they're responsible for doing this, and they're going to make it happen. I'm really proud this is exact, from my perspective, is exactly what the high school needs. I think it will go a long way in fixing some of the things that are broken, and I just can't give enough credit to all those kids that realize that and are part of the solution. So I thank you. I have just one question, but I'll open up the rest of the committee for any questions or comments they may have relative to this.
Yeah, Peter, I just want to say I completely agree with that comment. I mean, we're here because of our staff and students, and, you know, they're taking a stand and they're coming out and saying, "We need this in our schools." And that video was really, you know, we should just put that out there and say, "Look, and someone should come in and be our DEI coordinator. Here's why." And, you know, they're showing us that reason, so kudos to all of you for putting that together and being a part of this group.
I agree too. I think, Peter, you said it really nicely, and Mike too. I think something that really excites me about it too is the opportunity for you all to kind of expand it to get younger grades, so Gate students and all elementary school students. I mean, nothing's more inspiring to them than seeing the high school students at work. It really takes it to the next level, really. So, you know, teachers are doing all these things and trying to, you know, build good citizenship of the younger and the littles and, you know, but hearing from the, you know, Beyond Cool High School group, it really drives it home. I think you guys have a different way of resonating with them, so I would love to see this kind of put in, you know, in an elementary and middle school, you know, appropriate level, you know, with what the exact messages, but, you know, for their grade levels, that would be awesome. I think it's inspiring and awesome job.
I don't know what more I can say that Mike and Peter and Nicole haven said. I think it's just fantastic to see the young kids, well, I mean, they're the oldest of the young kids in our school district, just take charge of something that needs, that we need in the school district. And, you know, reaching out to the younger kids, that is, I mean, it's, they might not listen to adults, but they'll probably listen to their peers, and it's always cool to have high school students come and talk to little kids. So, thank you for all your hard work, and I'm so impressed.
I mean, we actually, one more thing, I mean, just as an example, we've seen that happen already when the high school kids come down and talk to the elementary kids about band and instruments, when we switched from, you know, hearing from adults tell them about all of the amazing things, both music department and then, you know, the instrument presentation, when the students came, it was like, "Oh, no, that's what I want to do." It kind of helps. I think that this is another case of that, where hearing from older peers is really, really resonates with the kids. So that's, yeah, absolutely, it's great.
And I'll just say, I've been saying for years that the children will lead us, and I think this is a good example of that. And how many are on the board with, are all those kids? Is that the entire board, or are there more?
No, it's a group of 30.
30, okay. That's great. And I, Dr. McGuire, I have one question. Is this a new committee, or is this just a change in direction from the old advisory councils or brand new?
No, this is brand new. So this was one of the things that I wanted to do as principal and have just started the group together. Like Superintendent Burke has said, says often, "We're going slow to go fast. We want to get it right." But this is a group that's committed to positive change, and they're really willing to roll up their sleeves and do the work, so we're really excited about that.
Great. Thank you. I think it's amazing, and obviously it's a little bit more difficult with the hybrid or remote status that we're in now, but I think ultimately it's a step in the right direction. It's just, it's just really great to see that this kind of thing is happening in Situate. It's great. So thank you again from all of us.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. The next agenda item was, is celebrates, I'm sorry, is the student report, but our three folks who report were in that video, part of the advisory committee, so they're not going to be reporting out additionally because we just came off vacation week and we're in remote, so there's not that much to report on, unless any of the reps were having to say we can move on to our next item on the agenda. All right. So that is under Old Business. This is the Diversity Equity Inclusion Director update. Superintendent Burkhead?
Thank you, Chairman Gates, and welcome, everybody. Good evening. It's nice to be back, and what a great way to start a meeting. I concur with all the wise things that were said by our school committee, that the Student Advisory Council in and of itself establishing a place where students can come together and take the leadership role of their school, and I think it's wonderful. So kids, great job, Dr. McGuire, outstanding, you and your team. Along with the kids, I often say, you know, it's really important to get the kids involved in the school because after all, it is their school. So that was really impressive, everybody. Look forward to seeing more work out of that group, and please invite me to an upcoming meeting. I'd love to meet you all and just listen to what's going on. So thank you very much. The future's certainly bright. The next thing I have up to is, here's the report on the Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion. I know this has been going on for a few months, been a very thorough hiring process, and I just wanted to comment on that and bring everybody up to speed. So I'd first like to thank our screening committee members for their commitment to this extremely important process. It's a lot of time, commitment, and dedication. We had a lot of volunteers from our school community involved in this, and I want to thank them. I'd also like to thank our outstanding co-chairs, Ms. Michelle Crawford and Ms. Jen Arnold, as well as our school committee representatives on the committee, which were Nicole Brandalini and Janice Lindblom. And finally, our students and staff and school community members who participated, took their own time to get involved in our forums and offer feedback. That was very helpful to me in coming to a conclusion. So thank you all. So I've completed the last step in our comprehensive search for this position for the district. We had two finalists move forward by the committee. The process was conducted similar to the hiring of our Special Education Director and Business and Finance Director. Both these positions have been filled by highly qualified and outstanding candidates to date. We got it right. My philosophy on building the best school district in the world is that it's all about people, not programs. Besides the safety of our school community, hiring the best people and keeping them is what results in the best schools. I recall, one of the reasons cited by the school committee hiring me was my reputation for building high-performance teams of highly competent people with strong ethical standards. We have my promise that we are doing that. One of my other philosophies on education and hiring is building teams is to never settle. This is one of the most important positions we've hired in a long time in the district, and one the committee has entrusted to me to add to our central office team. Unlike other central office additions this year, the Special Education and Business and Finance positions, I don't believe we have the right candidate for this position right now. Both candidates certainly had strengths, but ultimately, it's about the fit within Situate. The position's expectations and my belief that they are superstars, the best of the best. After reviewing the candidates in two separate forums, the faculty and community forum, conducting lengthy 90-plus-minute interviews in person with each candidate, reading two or three times all the feedback by our screening committee and forum members, and completing a very thorough reference check, I did not feel confident that we had the right candidate for this position. It is important that I reflect with our team on why we may not have been able to track the best person for this position. One obvious reason is the timing of the search. Professionals typically are not looking to move in the middle of a year. They know what their next contract looks like in November or December. They've just started the year. Another is the ambiguity and scope of the job description. And finally, our ability to advertise to a large market. We were not able to get the word out across the state with enough breadth, as we would like, with such an aggressive original timeline. Our next step to show our community that we are still very passionate about this position and are not willing to settle is to first redefine or refine the job description with community input. It was just too big and too cumbersome. We want to narrow it down and really focus it, and we want input to do that. The next step will be to repost the position as soon as possible, as soon as the job description is tweaked. We want to repost the position to a wider market. We want to thank Michelle Crawford for giving us a lot of resources. Since the first posting, we have a number of other places to post this job description, and we think we'll get more of a candidate pool. So, the time of year is also an important piece of this, so our next step is to refine the job description, expand the market, and we will begin this work immediately. The time of year is better to finding a central office position as January begins the hiring season for all central office staff. I'm confident we will have the right person in place soon. I would also like to make it clear that our district focus this year has been on two pillars. Safe and strong reopening, which includes our year-long approach to improving our hybrid in-person and remote learning platforms, excuse me, and the second pillar is diversity, equity, and inclusion. Our school committee, superintendent, administration, and educator goals are all aligned with these two pillars. So this work has already happened. This position is one more piece to that puzzle. I will make sure to have a presentation in the near future on all our work to date in the area of DEI. So I wanted to make sure that people knew that because we're not deciding tonight on this new position, that the work isn't being done, and so we'll report out on that. And two, I wanted to make sure that all those people, hard work that went into this, that they understand that we're not done, we have more work to do, and with some tweaks on our end and learning from our experience and assessing on where we can improve in the hiring process, we will find the best person for this position. Thank you.
Great. I was unmuted. Any comments or questions from the school committee for Superintendent Burkhead? My, Pete, my only comment would be, I have full confidence in Bill, and I know everything I need to know at this point.
I think the points that the superintendent made about the timing of the search, you know, are valid, and I'm looking forward to a new pool of candidates, and I think it's important for everybody to know that we're not done. We will, you know, we'll get this job done, and it will be the best person. Thank you.
Yeah, my comment is, I think, I think first and foremost, as I have, we, I think as a district and as a school committee and everything, we feel firmly confident that this position will be filled. And Superintendent Burkhead has said on multiple occasions that, you know, the hiring process was very difficult when we hired him, and that we did our due diligence when we hired him, and we hired the other positions as well. So I also have full confidence that though it's, I would say, I don't know, disappointing, but obviously we want to get someone in right away, but I think it's most important that we get the right person in here. So I'm firmly behind the decision of the superintendent and will support him in finding the right candidate in the near future. All right. Anything else?
I would say I agree. Oh, sorry, go ahead. I agree with everything. I understand the reasoning behind it. I think timing is everything too, when, you know, you post for a position, especially in education. So, you know, I just want to, just to kind of double down on, you know, that it's, maybe, Bill, you could just put a comment on it too, if, you know, it's no secret that there was some opposition to this position in this hire in the district. So just to get, you know, any other comments on, you know, our full, I mean, I know, obviously, school committee and Bill, we're all very committed to this hire. It's not, you know, being derailed in any way. It's happening. We're just going to find the best person, the best candidate for the position. Any comments, Bill? Just to-
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Reiterate that for our community.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Brandalini. And agree, there's been open opposition to the position. I want to know there was zero relationship to our decision, and that opposition had zero to do with it. It's all about finding the right person, and I think, you know, the screening committee, I know there's many members on here tonight, so I want to, you know, thank you. I know this is a bummer, doing all that work and then, you know, waiting this long and then not getting a result. Just know that my promise was to let our central office staff just know right before this meeting in the school committee tonight, and, you know, keep that promise, and I will reach out to you separately tomorrow with a more personal email, you know, with more details, and I'd be happy to talk to anybody in our community about the decision. But I've been doing this a long time, and it's really about, it's all about 100% about, you know, this is such an important position, and I think it's as important as my position and other central office positions. I don't think anyone's more important than the other if you're going to have a great team. And, you know, just reading the feedback from our community members and the forum, you know, when we hire someone, I think there needs to be full excitement about, "This is the one, this is the one." Just wasn't feeling that. There's a lot of other things that people need to know when I check references, that I dig and dig and dig, and, you know, it's, again, two great people, but with all the information I have that most of you don't have, it's my full belief that we just don't have the right person, and I'm willing to sacrifice. It would be easier for me to say, "Yeah, let's put them in now and get them doing the work." It's hard for me to pull back and say, "We have to wait a little longer." But I do want everyone to know, the train hasn't stopped. Again, I think our co-chairs are back to work already on redefining that job description so we have more clarity on the role. Some of the feedback we got from the candidates we interviewed was that it was, you know, just too big and, you know, a little ambiguous, and where would I go first? And so we want to get the community involved and narrow that down. So we learned a lot too, and I think we'll be better for that. We'll be able to articulate better what the role is to people applying for the job, and I'm certain because of the timing of year. And one thing I, you know, also that I wanted to mention is, you know, when people are applying for jobs now in January, administrators, sometimes they have contracts through the end of June. What we'll put in our posting this time is to make it more flexible, to get more people to apply, that we'll work around their availability. So if they're available in February, March to start, that's what we want. If they're not, however, and they have a contract to the end of June, and they're the best candidate, and they're a superstar, we'll work with them. So I think we didn't have that flexibility last time. This person was going to start in February, and I think getting, you know, feedback we got was, you know, a lot of people just can't leave their job in the middle of the year, especially in education. So for all those reasons, we tried. It was a good faith effort. We got two good candidates, but we didn't get, in my opinion, the best candidates for this position, and we will. So in a month's time, I hope to be sitting here and introducing our new DEI director, and we'll all be excited about that. So that day will come, and it will come sooner than later. And also, just so everyone knows, I will get a timeline out. We'll be working on a timeline for the whole process so that people can be reassured that, you know, this is the interview schedule and timeline. So we'll make that public so people are confident that we're moving right along and getting this thing going and that we have a plan.
Great.
And Bill, I'm glad you said, you know, we're going to continue to work on this internally as well. This isn't, you know, we're not dropping the DEI work that needs to be done until we have a coordinator. This is what we're going to continue to do with our staff and our students over the next couple of months, and then bring that coordinator in. So I'm glad you said that. It's an important thing, you know, unfortunately, we didn't find the right candidate, but, you know, the committee has full faith in you, and the community is overwhelmingly in support of this position. And obviously, we need the right fit for Situate, so, you know, hopefully in the next round, that's, you know, what we get.
Thank you, Mr. Long, and I think, you know, just you reaffirm a good point that all this work is already happening. I mean, this person's going to be the glue that kind of helps us put it all together. It'll have a huge role, but we've got a lot of great people out there doing this work already, and we heard it tonight from the kids. So I look forward to sharing that with everybody, and I think that will also be a pleasant surprise for those that aren't aware of all the great things that are happening in our schools under this pillar of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I look forward to presenting that in an upcoming meeting.
Great. Thanks very much. I think it was helpful discussion, and thanks for making a difficult decision, but I think ultimately the right one for the district. So moving forward in the agenda, back to Superintendent Burkhead with your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Gates. I want to make sure I'm not muted, okay? I'll try to keep it brief because I know we have a lot of other celebrity guests tonight, including a crowd favorite, Dr. Dutch, and I heard there might be a prezzy tonight, so I cannot top that, so I'll do my best with this. You know, we got some more good news. The vaccine is, you know, is in Situate. It's been being administered, and I'm proud to say it's being administered by some of our own nurses in the Situate School District. Another great example, I know it's the school committee's goal this year to work closely with our town, and we're doing that a lot, and it's been a great relationship, and the town reached out to us and wanted to include our school nurses in the first line of vaccination, so all of our nurses have been vaccinated, received the first vaccination, they all volunteered for that, and then also they've- And then also they've all, all volunteered, um, to work with the town to administer those vaccines to other frontline, employees of the town. And that started today. So I just want to give a similar shout out to our nurses, also to the town administrator and, um, our, our police and fire family and medical family over there who have committed to getting this done for our first responders, um, including our own school nurses. So I wanted to share that good news and that update. So the, um, you know, that, that is a good sign that there's positive things to come with the vaccine already on the ground level. And our school employees take an active role in helping get that out to the community. Next, I want to, I have a quick conversation about our move to remote. We haven't had a meeting since then, so I just wanted to kind of clarify, um, you know, with folks, the thought process behind it and make sure the committee understands. And I get your questions answered on how we move in and out. I think we've done a real good job in making decisions that are very thoughtful, consistent and inclusive. Last Tuesday, January 5th, I had to make the difficult decision to move our district to fully remote. I'm a strong believer that our students learn best when physically in school, which made this decision very difficult. My first priority and responsibility as superintendent is to keep our students and staff safe. We have a comprehensive metric we use to make these decisions and they are made in consultation with our local medical experts, the Mass Department of Public Health, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, our situat Board of Health, and our school physician. All agreed that this move was necessary for situat in our school system. And just to share a few numbers with you, between December 19th and January 4th, our town moved into the red category, which is the highest category, with a surge in cases, including a record high one day of 119 and positivity rate well over 5%. Our metric had agreed on a 3% marker as one of our indicators. Since the beginning of the school year, to put things in perspective, we've had a total of 93 positive cases with students and staff. Since January 1st, we've had 43. So almost 50% of our cases have come in the last 10 days. We also had over 350 student and staff absences in one day, uh, on each day of, of the January 4th and 5th. And a large number of students and staff quarantining. So for example, if someone in my family has COVID, I'm a teacher in our district, I have to quarantine, I can't come to school. If I'm, I have a sibling that's, um, positive, I have to stay home. So I call it the collateral damage of the positive virus and the surge is that there weren't a lot of people able to come physically to school because of the high numbers. So when I talk a lot about, uh, spread in school as being our number one indicator, most important, it got to a point where the numbers were so high and so many people were out. And if you have hundreds of people quarantining, even if only 10% of those get it, you still have an incremental number of positive cases that you're bringing into the school. So in good conscience, with all those indicators hitting, um, even though we didn't have community spread, we weren't going to hang around till we had community spread. It was a proactive move, um, because we were hitting the post-holiday surge. So that's the thought process behind it. It's the same thought process we'll, um, use to re-enter school. We're going to continue to monitor our metric in school-related cases. An update is being sent out. It probably got sent out at 6:00 PM tonight on our positive cases from January 5th through 10th. Another one will be sent out on January 18th with a summary from cases from tonight, January 11th through January 17th. And then I'll send us a special notice on Wednesday, January 20th with confirmation on our return to hybrid learning in our current numbers from the 18th to the 20th. We will continue to, and this is all in that correspondence that went out. So I think it's important that people know when we're sending it out. When we're in school, we send it out every time we get a case. When we've been on vacation, we sent, we've sent it out at the end. I think this is a happy meeting where we send it out every four or five days to give people a flavor of what we're experiencing. But since we're not in school and we're not getting impacted by the spread in school, um, it's not necessary to post it every single day. So we're doing small chunks of time and we're sending that out. So the first one will be out there tonight, so you can take a look at that. And our expected return to hybrid learning is Thursday, January 21st. It's important also to note that the actions that take place outside of school impact our ability to return and stay in school. We've moved to remote learning, not because of school transmission, but because the numbers in our community were so high. It impacted our ability to offer safe learning environment. I just, I can't stress enough how important it is for our families to cooperate and our students in having conversations within your family about following the state, town, and school guidelines, including obvious, uh, large gatherings, social distancing, and wearing a mask. If we can collectively responsibly do this, we can return on the 21st and we can stay in school. If we cannot do this, then we won't. And so I'm just laying that gauntlet down right now. We're not in school, so the school transmission is no excuse. It's, it's happening outside of school. So if we want to get back, we have to do this. And I know I've heard a lot from the community that, you know, there might be a party here or this is happening there. You know, I'm imploring our community and our parents to have sit downs with your, with your children and just tell them how important this is. Cause we need to get back into school and you can help. So that's my plea to our district, to our students, uh, to our families to follow these guidelines. I know they're not great. I know isolation is terrible. I went through it myself. I lived it, um, but I didn't spread it. I mean, it stayed in our family. So I think, um, that's important. I, I'm an example and I'd ask that you all do that so that we can keep everybody safe and get back into school and start connecting at a face-to-face level. I want to end by giving a sailor shout out to our administrators and our staff for their ability to transition smoothly to a hybrid learning model to fully remote. I'm amazed on a day's notice or a night's notice that we were ready to do it. We had prepared, but until you actually do it, it's not the same thing. I've gotten a lot of feedback on it. Certainly we can improve and we will, and we're looking to do that. But I've gotten a lot of positive feedback and I thank you for those community members, students and parents that share feedback either way on how things are going so that we can continue to improve. But a lot of it's been very positive. It's not great situation and I'm just very impressed with how our team is, is conducting themselves during fully remote. So I thank you. I'm very proud to be superintendent here and I know that every kid's getting connected with and learning is happening. And again, if it's not in your home, please let us know, we'll fix that. I would also like to thank the students and the families for their understanding and patience. I know this is stressful. I know getting an email from me on a Tuesday that we're going remote for two weeks, uh, changes your dynamic at home. Changes your daycare, it changes how you conduct things at home. I know that's not ideal. But I, you do have my commitment that it's a last resort and it's only necessary for the greater good that we keep everybody safe. Right? So my goal, number one goal is to get everybody back, but I will only do so if it's safe. So thank you all for understanding and for, for being there and for hanging in there. We will get back to school, but I need your help to do that. That's my report, that's my report. Thank you.
Great, thanks Superintendent Burkhead. Any comments, questions from the committee?
Yeah, Bill, I just want to say that the amount of emails that I've seen, um, coming from teachers, just, you know, either one showing support for their staff or really getting the next day's agenda out there, especially at the younger grades, has been really impressive. It shows that, you know, they've taken the time, they're, they were ready to make this change. And it was, it was extremely seamless. I mean, the fact that some kindergarten teachers can keep kids engaged for that long on a computer and, you know, keep it going for that. Just being able to hear some of the conversation going on, but seeing the kids across the Zoom be engaged and be happy and, and learning something is, is a, is a great testament to how we've, you know, we've prepared for this. And ideally we all want to be back in school, but, um, you know, the staff has done a great job so far with, you know, having to go back to this remote learning.
Thank you, Mr. Long. And I'm, I know a lot of them are listening here tonight, so I know they all appreciate that support. Thank you. As a father too, as with students in the system, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, um, I think that the hard work the teachers have been, have put in the first four months of school made the transition to fully remote, you know, almost seamless. I mean, they worked so hard to, to make just the, the hybrid learning, um, model work that, you know, that made things go smoothly. I want to ask, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, Bill, of when the teachers expect to be vaccinated? I know they're doing the first responders, do you have in, um, just, you know, have you been notified at all about that?
I think it's a great question, Ms. Limbaugh. I, I haven't. I know there's debate on moving them over into phase two to get it done earlier, which would be sometime in February. That's what the commissioner said to us, will be the earliest would likely be sometime in February. So once I get a solid answer on that, I can report out. There's no definite determination at this point.
Okay, cause I know that, um, it doesn't take effect until two weeks after that first vaccination. So I don't want, you know, the community to think like, oh, the teachers are vaccinated, let's go back to school. It takes time. So, okay.
I agree.
Forward to that.
The commissioner had sent out something called pool testing. I don't know if you're familiar with that. You know, that's where you take samples testing. So they are sponsoring that. We have to get our response in to get more information on that by January 15th. So I'll have more information on that in upcoming meetings on whether we're going to commit to that. We're also working, um, on our binex testing, which is, um, something, one of a few districts that were able to get that through the state. It's a comprehensive training process, so that was kind of the delay in the red tape of us rolling that out. That will allow our nurses to test symptomatic staff or children that come down to the office. We won't be bringing people on campus that are symptomatic, but if someone gets sick during school, parental permission or if it's a staff member, that will allow us to test them right on the spot and get pretty quick results, which is a huge advantage for us. And so we're working on that as well. I know Nurse Leader Roach and her team are, you know, really working hard and getting the training done on that. So as soon as that's done and the state gives us the green light, that'll be another advantage for us to keep our people safe.
And with the binex, um, they wouldn't be one tech, one, uh, machine in every school? Would, would, would the student or a staff member get swabbed and that swab brought to the machine?
I don't know the answer to that yet. Yeah. But when I do report out, I will, I will definitely have all the details.
Okay.
Now we'll probably be smart enough to have Kelly report that out.
Hey, thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. No, thanks very much, Superintendent. Any, I, and I know that this is, you know, nobody really knows, but when will you potentially make a decision to continue into remote or go back to hybrid?
I'm sorry, uh, Chairman Gates, you were cut off a little bit at the beginning.
Oh, yeah. I just want to say my internet is a little bit sketchy, so, um, Vice Chair Long, you're in charge if I get kicked off. The question, I guess, it's, it's difficult to say, but when do you think you'll make the decision about returning full, uh, to hybrid or, or potentially extending, um, extending the remote learning option?
Well, I'd like to make it, you know, uh, as early as we can, maybe the, the Monday of the week of the 20th or whatever is that? You know, next Monday, the 18th, have an idea or at least, um, and get that out to the staff maybe and let them know, uh, to prepare to come back. And then we'll have to look at the numbers those next couple of days and be, be prepared to go either way with it. So it likely may come down to the Wednesday before where I'm letting people know. I'm going to try to give more notice than that, um, but it all depends on the numbers. If the numbers are, are steadying or staying down, um, lower than they've been and we're in good shape, I can let people know earlier. But what I don't want to do is give definite too early and then two days in a row we spike and have to call it off. So it's a tricky situation. It's a great question. We're meeting as a MAC team and we've included our, our administrative team also in those meetings now to get feedback and make sure we're, we're breaking down all that information and also working, you know, with our medical experts to look at that. So, um, this Thursday, so we'll have an idea on where the numbers are and where the trends are going. A lot of it is on trending and where trends are. And then next Monday, we'll have a better idea where we stand. And, you know, I'm hoping to get some information out to the staff on where we stand Monday to prepare one way or another. And then out to the community Wednesday at the latest.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I know, I know it's a difficult decision, but I just wanted to see, you know, what the plan was and, um, but we, I think everyone understands that it could be, it could be Wednesday morning that you say we're going to continue this remote learning.
Yeah, I, I think in respect to everybody, I think, you know, Wednesday morning at the latest, I would wait Wednesday night and have kids coming back Thursday. But I would tell everyone to prepare to come back in person on Thursday, the 21st. I would default to that. And then worst case scenario, right? It would be, you know, that we have to stay in remote. We've been doing that, so we're okay with that. So it is a tricky situation. There's no easy answer, but we know in the COVID world that one day is a, is like a week. So next Monday, I hope to have a lot more information and evidence to make a call, um, or at least to kind of give our staff a heads up this way we're leaning. And then by Wednesday morning, maybe Tuesday night, if we can, get the word out to the community to prepare.
Okay. Great. Thank you for your report. Thanks for doing all the, uh, you know, really is a full-time job. Or I shouldn't say full-time, I should say 24/7 job.
Well, you're paying, you're paying me full-time, so I better work at least that much, right?
24/7 job.
Pete, I had a question.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hayes.
Bill, um, I would assume, uh, that your administrative team and various committees are still planning on exploring what it'll take to get kids back in school full-time? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
We talked about that right before Christmas.
Yeah. And thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Hayes. We actually had a, um, Safe and Strong Task Force meeting for January 7th. I had to postpone that because we thought the timing, that whole task force is about having that conversation about returning to in full-person learning or even a phased in or whatever we decide. But, um, we, we thought that after the announcement on, what was it, the 5th? Uh, I think emotions were high, we were spiking. It wasn't the ideal time to have a, a rational conversation about bringing everybody back when we're, we're telling everyone to stay home. So that, just so everybody knows, that's the rationale behind pumping the brakes on that meeting. But we're probably early February going to get that back up and rolling. And again, we can, we can transition to bringing kids back in pretty quickly. But what we're going to do, it's in our plan already, but what we want to do is, um, get that whole group together and have some input. You know, there's representation from administrators, teachers, students, community members, there's all kinds of people on that committee. So I want to hear what they have to say and I want to hear the best plan. We also have some, I know, uh, Ms. Arnold tonight is going to share some student learning time with us. So we also have that data that we can use to share with the committee, um, along with some of the survey results from this year. So we've got some good information to share with people to make good, solid decisions on bringing kids back. But that will start probably early February, we'll be meeting and coming up with a plan. And then we've got the metric already in place, so I think we're ready to go once these numbers start coming down or the, um, the vaccine starts kicking in, we'll be ready to go. And I'm optimistic it's going to happen this year.
And I'd just like to reinforce your, um, your comments that it, it, we've got a long way to go before we get back to hybrid. And, uh, it's, it's really up to the situat community, uh, to get us back to a hybrid system. And, uh, uh, again, I think we have a long, long way to go to get there, in my opinion. When, after last Friday's numbers, uh, which were startling, even when they hit five, the, the, the last week's numbers were startling.
Yeah, we have to, they have to come down. No question about it.
All right. All right, thanks again Superintendent Burkhead for everything you're doing. It's not necessarily what we all signed up to do, but you're doing a great job. Keep at it and, uh, let's hope these numbers go down so we can get back to school or kids in the classroom.
Thank you.
Um, all right, moving on the agenda, Director of Business and Finance, Dr. Dutch.
Good evening. Sorry to disappoint, there is, there is no prezzy this evening. I do have some things that I want to update you on regarding, uh, the budget at the present time, FY '21. Give you a very brief update on FY '22 as well. First of all, I'm sure that you're all aware that the federal government passed the stimulus bill. Included in that stimulus bill is, uh, money for schools. If you recall in the spring, we had what was called ESER, um, which was about $72,000 to $75,000 that we were able to spend on curriculum or, um, technology, what, there's, there are some parameters for that. As part of this stimulus bill, they've passed, or they've, they've created ESER 2, which will be about three and a half times as much as what we received last spring to be spent. And that money can be spent from a month from now up to FY '23. So we've got quite a bit of time. So, we've got quite a bit of time to spend that money. Again, it's pretty broad on what it can be spent on. I also wanted to update you on the air quality report. We are still waiting for that to be finalized. We've gotten one draft. There were some items in there that we had already addressed. So, they went back out, checked those, confirmed it, and now, they're finalizing the newest report. And in general, to simply say that things look pretty good. There are a couple of things that we'll need to address down the road for, in the fall, or when we plan to go back full-time. And we're aware of, and we're looking at the resources to do that. And then, the FY '22 budget, we are working on that budget. That was the superintendent today. Shared a first pass of that budget. We'll be meeting with other department heads and the principals later this week to get clarification on some items. And then, the superintendent will meet with those folks to finalize their request and will begin presenting it to you, the school committee, and then eventually to the public. If I could, can I share my screen, Peter?
Yeah, you should be able to.
Okay. So, I wanted to provide an update for you on the FY '21 budget, similar to what I shared with the Finance Subcommittee. So, I'll run through this pretty quickly. It is a spreadsheet that you're seeing. The first item are our revenue items, and you can see all the different revenue resources that we have. The town appropriation or athletic fees, which you can see the amount budgeted was $220,000. And currently, we have $78,869 that's come in. Non-resident tuition for our special ed programs that we offer that others towns send students to. You can see we're doing a little better. We're doing significantly better there. Circuit breaker revenue, you can see, is doing pretty well. Early childhood, we did not charge any fees. This amount here that you see is a balance that was left over from previous years. So, we've got $140,000 shortfall there. Full-day kindergarten, you can see that we budgeted $510,000. We did not charge for full-day kindergarten. We did receive $450,000 from the town to cover that cost. And then, a balance that was in that account brings us to the $509,000. And then, 262 is a grant for early childhood. Receipts for athletics, this is a balance. We haven't taken in much this year. Our revenue for transportation, you can see we've only brought in $81,000 and budgeted 230. So, we're behind there, and we'll have to make that up. And then, the balance of these are grants. So, you've got the Metco Grant, Title I, Title II-A, our special ed grant, Title IV. And you can see that we're on target for what we budgeted with those accounts. So, that's our revenue and where we are at this point. I'd like to go through our expenses to this point in the year. And I'll go through this pretty quickly, and then, if you have specific questions, I'll be happy to answer those. To save time, I've blacked out the dollar amounts for each of these specific items. But I wanted to leave these here so that you could see what falls into these different categories and how we organize the resources. So, you've got line items for the school committee. You can see we've got most of what was budgeted still left at this point in time. School district, that's the superintendent's office and staff and supplies within that office. You can see we're about 50% of that spent. We also have about $47,000 that we're anticipating being reimbursed for COVID expenses, money that we spent out of those line items there. You then go to curriculum positions, department heads, assistant superintendent, those types of positions. And again, we're at about 50% spent, and we're pretty close to halfway through the year. So, you can see we're doing pretty well there. Business clerical is the business office, and it's all salaries within that particular line item. So, you can see we're doing well, okay, there. Legal services, a little bit more than halfway spent. We had quite a bit of negotiations this past fall and late summer in anticipation of reopening. So, we've spent some funding there. Information technology, salaries, contract services, and paraprofessionals. And you can see there's a fairly significant amount spent out of that line item. We've overspent the contracted services, and those are Chromebooks and whatnot. So, as soon as all of those funds are returned for COVID expenses, that line item will be in good shape. Not concerned about that. Curriculum development leadership. This, again, you can see what's budgeted and what we've spent so far. So, we're in pretty good shape there, better than halfway through the year. Principals, these are all of our principal salaries plus their supplies, where less than half of it is spent at this point. So, we're in pretty good shape again. Teacher salaries, again, you can see we're in pretty good shape at this point in those areas, as well as special ed teachers. Substitute teachers, we're using much, many fewer substitutes this year, mostly because it's difficult to find substitutes. Also, when we're remote on the Wednesdays, we're not bringing in substitutes. And while we're remote now, we're not bringing in substitutes. So, that should end up being a surplus at the end of the year that will help us absorb some of the shortfalls in revenue that you saw earlier in my presentation. Paraprofessionals, $1.2 million budgeted, and we are still at $823,000 available. Librarians, we've spent less than half there. Staff professional salaries, that is also part of an administrator's salary that is in that line item currently. As we do the next budget, you'll see that generic line item disappear because it really is a catch-all. Professional development, that's primarily reimbursement for staff that are taking courses. You can see that there's quite a bit budgeted there. And we encumber and assume that that's going to be spent. So, that's why you're seeing it as being spent already, even though that doesn't happen until, well, it happens after the fact. So, this is really from FY '20 that we've spent that money. Textbooks, we still have $34,000 out of $84,000. Supply line item, a little less than half available out of the $237,000 that was budgeted. Music festivals, those bills just came in, but we haven't, so they haven't come out yet. They're starting that process. Special education, you can see that we have spent quite a bit of that. There's not much left there. But we have not applied circuit breaker to this account yet. So, once that circuit breaker is charged off against the private school tuitions and the collaborative tuition, we should be in pretty good shape. So, I'm not concerned there. Guidance salaries, tutoring and supplies, pretty good shape. This is primarily supply salaries in the psychological services. And again, you can see we're in pretty good shape there at this point. School nurses, we've hired additional nurses, but they're being paid out of the COVID resources. So, we're in a pretty good position there. Bus driver salaries, you can see that we've overspent. Homeless, you can't see that, but we've overspent the homeless line item. We're transporting a student from Hyannis all the way to Cituate and back home because that's where they're being housed at this point in time. So, that's a pretty significant expense that we didn't anticipate. And we've encumbered quite a bit here as well. So, you can see that. Athletics, we've spent a little less than half at this point. Our student activities, the clubs, again, we've spent very little of that yet. Stipends will be paid, and then, you'll see that. School security professional is our school resource officer. We're billed for that by the town, so that's within our budget. Our custodial salaries, including maintenance, building maintenance supplies, we've overspent that pretty significantly, again, because of COVID expenses, all much of the work that we're doing, the supplies that we've bought, PPE and the cleaning supplies are coming out of that line item. So, this will be replenished as we get that money back. Our utility, gas is for the gas bill for heating. Electric utility and telephone, you can see that that's overspent. It's overspent because we've taken a lot of our expense for COVID repairs out of that particular line item, knowing that the bulk of our bills wouldn't come until the second half of the year for electric. And then, contract services, again, you can see we're overspent here. And partially on the side, you can see that we've got quite a bit that will be reimbursed through the COVID CARES Act funds. All of this is HVAC repairs, testing, RISE Engineering, all falling within that category. So, you can see the bottom line, we budgeted $43,937,000. And we have a balance at this point in time of $26 million, even with all these expenses. So, we're doing pretty well, even with the revenue shortfall that we've gotten, we've had. And I think we're going to be okay, thanks to some savings. And thanks to the town for providing us that $450,000. So, that, I'll stop sharing the screen at that point. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I think, Dr. Dutch, that's more detail than we generally have had. So, I'll give a moment for the school committee members to digest all that and see if they have any questions. Are there any? Are you guys all awake?
I guess I'll ask one question. Have we seen a lot of reimbursement from the CARES Act?
We have. We've spent about $1.2 million, and we've seen about $600,000, $650,000 come back.
That's not too bad.
The only, we've had, I think, two things that were denied. One was for a very small amount, $150,000, and the other was a couple thousand-dollar plumbing repair that they felt was maintenance more than it was COVID-related.
In that reimbursement, is that coming directly from that Plymouth County fund?
Yes. It comes from Plymouth County to the town, and the town then puts it back into our account. And then, it's our responsibility to put it into the account where we took it from to make sure that those line items are made whole.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
The only, Dr. Dutch, the only question I have, which I know I have asked you before, is what is... If there is a large, if there is an amount that we may not get reimbursed by CARES, what do you see as that potential liability? Like, is it $300,000? Is it $100,000? Are you fairly confident that the majority of what we submitted will be reimbursable?
I'm 99% confident that the majority of what we've put in for reimbursement will be reimbursed. Most things are similar, most things that we've put in for reimbursement for are similar to things that we've already been reimbursed for. So, there's no reason to think that they wouldn't qualify. The challenge moving forward is that the town of Cituate has met their threshold for what they've been allotted. So, we've probably spent more than what we were allocated. So, there may be some things that we may not get reimbursed for. And if that's the case, then that's a conversation we'll need to have with the town on how we would cover those costs.
Okay.
I'm hopeful we'll be able to find some other savings, but I'm, you know, I'm not 100% sure of that.
Okay.
And to this point, I would say we're no more than $100,000 overspent beyond what we've submitted. And it, you know, maybe, may end up being less than that.
Okay. But is the town, so the town was, I don't know, I guess the town of Cituate was given whatever it is. Let's just say, I'm just making up the number, a million dollars. So, between the town and the school, we have a million dollars to submit versus that dollar amount, correct? Or is it specifically?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there was no specific amount for the schools. It was a town-based amount. And the town has been great with, you know, accommodating and, you know, submitting those on our behalf. They haven't said no to anything, understanding that these are things that need to be done to make sure the schools are safe.
Right. Thanks. And again, as we mentioned a couple of times before, I think the schools are in as good a shape as they have been in years. So, I think as much as the pandemic is wreaking havoc on everything else, at least from an HVAC perspective, things haven't looked better.
Yeah, I think it's given us opportunity to address some issues and some needs and also brought to light the need to create a comprehensive maintenance plan so that we, so these things are maintained and don't end up as significant expenses down the road.
Great. Thank you very much. Very much appreciated. All right. Moving forward on the agenda, Assistant Superintendent Arnold.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Gates. I tried to do a prezzy for this, but I could not do it justice. So, I want to be sure of my debut prezzy at least attempts to live up to Dr. Dutch's. So, I just, I opted for a power link. So, you may recall, at our last meeting, actually, at your last meeting, I talked to you about student learning time and that we had to fill out a survey and that we had, Desi had given our results to us. And preliminary results were that we had met the standards or we were cleared, is how they stated. That's how they labeled it. So, tonight, I'm going to give you a student learning time update. So, just as a reminder, this is the state regulation. This is the state regulation, and this is how they define student learning. And this is across the board. This isn't just during a hybrid or remote instruction. Or this is just in general, this is student learning time. Because every year, even without COVID or remote learning models, we have to submit student learning time data to the state as part of our CPR, our coordinated program we do. So, again, Desi required us all to submit the amount of time that students are actively learning. And what they told us to do is focus on the preliminary model. So, the way they defined that is how the model that all students have the opportunity... the model that all students have the opportunity to take advantage of, right? So all of our students have the opportunity to be within the hybrid model. However, for different reasons, they may have opted for remote. Families opted for remote learning model, or they, we, they may be attending school full-time because they're in a certain program. But overall, every student in the district was offered the opportunity to attend school with a remote learn, I mean, a hybrid model. That was our preliminary model. Um, so on Thursday, Happy New Year, December 31st, Desi decided to publish, publish all of the results from districts across Commonwealth. So we did pretty well. I have some, I won't take too much time. I have some data here and compared us to surrounding districts. Can you see all this? Let me see. I compared us to all the surround, to surrounding districts, Situate, Hassett, Duxbury, Hanover, Hingham, and Norwell. And Marshville, Marshville, golf. And just to, the categories are live instruction, remote instruction, remote, remote synchronous instruction, rather, remote asynchronous instruction, and then total student learning time. So this is grade one. This is grade two. Four, rather, I'm sorry. Grade seven. And grade 10. So I know that's a lot of information, I'm sorry. Did you go the wrong slide? That's a lot of information just to look at. So I summarized it to sort of tell our story. You can see in grades one and four, I, for all grades, I gave the SPS total student learning time hours per week. The range of hours across the districts that I looked at. And then the median number of hours for all those districts. So for Situate grade one, we had 27.5 student learning time hours in a week. And the range was 21 to 31.5. And the median was 25.5. So we did well in grade one. Similar for grade four. Median was 25, and we were 27.5. In grade seven, we were 29, the median was 28. And then in grade 10, the median was 28.5, but we were 25.5. And there's an explanation for that. The, the survey, the questions, the way they were worded on the survey was a little bit unclear. And so there is room for interpretation across districts. People, a lot of people had a lot of questions about it. But the result was that in our high school, we reported the minimum required time for, say, student learning time that the high school set. For, um, whoops, sorry, the high schools set for student learning time. So for the live, let me just go back here. So for live instruction, interaction, instruction with students remotely, they set, they reported the minimum number of hours that they had expected teachers to interact with students live, which was, I believe, 4.5. But the reality is that we determined that about 85% or more of the teachers were teaching synchronously, remotely, probably half to all of a class time. So that's a little, that's a little deceiving, that bit of data right there. We know that Desi will ask us to report this again, to, will ask us to report our student learning time data again, probably next month. And so now with that guidance and having completed it and looked at the data the first time, we will be better able to, to submit data that's more representative of what's actually happening across all of the district. So in conclusion, I'd just like to give commendation to all of our educators. It's been said here earlier tonight, but we can't say enough about how fortunate we are to have such fantastic educators who are truly, truly here for students. You know, most of them are lamenting the fact that we can't be here in person full-time with all of our students. That's what they, they're born to do. They're born to be with students and teach students. So, but with this switch to remote learning, like other people have said here, they've done an amazing job. And with the support of their building leaders, department chairs, and curriculum coordinators, principals have done an amazing job, you know, sort of setting parameters and talking people through this shift to remote learning, which we did really well, I would say. But it wasn't without all that behind the scenes work from principals. And parents and caregivers and other family members who are doing things like being a teacher for the first time, the stress and the responsibility we have asked of you is definitely overwhelming. But we appreciate all of your efforts and your collaboration with us. And of course, students, we can't forget students because they're the ones doing the work too. And showing up and really participating in all of their courses and, and the learning time that their teachers are providing. And I have to say, our sailor spirit is, is still shining through. So our next step will be to, for me to follow up the department chairs and curriculum coordinators to really look into this data and think about how we increase the learning across all categories, live instruction, remote synchronous instruction, and remote asynchronous instruction, to make sure that it's targeted and that our students are getting what they need. You know, to sort of check up on ourselves, progress monitoring. And Superintendent Burkhead did mention we will be having a safe and strong task force meeting. And during that time, we will share this data so that we will have a place, a foundation from which to begin as we strengthen the curriculum, student learning time for, I apologize, as we strengthen student learning time for the rest of the year. Any questions? I'll stop sharing.
Great, thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Arnold. Thanks for doing all that work. I know it probably takes a little bit of effort to put all that together, but we appreciate seeing it in the variety of formats that you did. To get, helps us gain perspective on it. Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
I had a couple, Pete.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Hayes.
Jen, what is the state requirement regarding time in learning? Is, is there a number?
So they want total student time on learning to be 20 hours a week minimum.
Okay.
And we exceed that. And, and also it's like six and a half hours a day of total students, the student learning time on learning. Or not, I apologize, the school day is six and a half hours. However, we don't, students aren't learning for six and a half hours if we were normally in school. And the same goes for being remote or hybrid. Because there are things like lunch periods, you know, transitioning, things like that.
Right.
But overall, 20 hours per week is required by Desi.
And is that required for each of those four grade levels? Or is it a composite of, of the, the system as a whole?
It's, it's everybody, each grade level.
Okay. And, and that's great. And, and I guess the only comment I wanted to make was, you know, as we're in remote right now and, and conceivably could be there for some time. You know, I've had a number of conversations over the last few weeks with, with both kids and teachers and, and all that. And, and I agree with some, the sentiment of those conversations, which was, I mean, it is such a, such a terrible year. And what everyone is doing, going through. And, and the job that we were doing, we are doing, in my opinion, is exemplary. But my feeling is that, that as we go through the process, especially as you get into the older grades, my, my opinion is that we should concentrate more on socialization rather than education. Because the, my, my, my opinion is, is that kids can survive the, the difference in the education aspect of going to school much easier than they can the socialization aspect of the schools, you know, the, the, the education where, where we're giving. So I just wanted to make that and see if you had an opinion on that.
But that's a really good point, Mr. Hayes. It's funny because it's coincidental that Desi also has new regulations right around remote learning and socialization. So there will be, for remote students, there will be a certain number of hours that districts will have to ensure that students are receiving that are face-to-face. So to address that socialization part between their, their teachers and their peers. So that's something we have worked on as a district, you know. We started off early with, with our Connect 10, in which we decided that every student had to interface with a teacher every day for a minimum of 10 minutes. And it's gone well beyond that. The students interact so much more with teachers every day. But it is something that's in the forefront of every single administrator's mind, certainly my mind and the teachers' minds. And that's one of the things that with the department chairs and principals, you know, we can drill down on that and how do we support teachers and students so that they do have more of that face-to-face time? I think we're doing a pretty good job now. I mean, we can always have more face-to-face time, but it, you know, it has to be quality and we have to be sure that we are, are focused on supporting those kids socially and emotionally.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Yeah, Mr. Arnold, I just had one question. So as we go through the year and we look at, you know, what we expect to do from our curriculum perspective, how do we feel that we're tracking towards, you know, where kids should be this year versus what a normal year would be, or at least what we're expecting them to get through at this point?
Excellent question, Mr. Long. The short answer is, I, yeah, I, I think ours, what we're finding is our students are making more progress than I would have thought. And, and I'm glad to be wrong about that. You may have seen the message I sent out last week about MCAS. And there's a push not to use MCAS, but the commissioner feels like it'll be a good data collection point to see just how much progress we have made. And, and to help us focus on where we really have to be intervening or what interventions we have to give our kids because they have missed instructional face-to-face time with teachers. So I wish I could answer you more definitively. I have a strong feeling that our kids are doing a lot better than a lot of people might expect, given our circumstance. Our teachers, I can't, I can't say enough about how our teachers are rising to this challenge. Interacting with students, supporting them, making sure they get what they need, even in this difficult time. So I'm sorry if that's not definitive enough, but I'm trying to give you an honest assessment.
No, that's fine. I know I kind of put you on the spot and it wasn't exactly on, on topic. But it, it would be interesting to see where we stand on that at the end of the year.
Yep.
And, and I would be okay if we, we don't do MCAS this year. It would be interesting to see kids doing MCAS from home, if, you know, unfortunately, that's where we're at.
Yep, it'll be interesting.
All right, thank you. I said one question, Ms. Arnold. Will, does Desi require that we do another report to this time on learning? Or is this it until next year?
No, I'm sure they, the commissioner said there will be another one we will have to do. My guess is it may be next month or certainly no later than March. So we will be doing another one. And, and what we learned from this one will guide our next, our response within the time period before that survey, and also how we answer the questions.
Okay. All right. Great, thank you very much.
Peter, I have a question for Jen. I'm just curious, the 10 days in the beginning of the year that Desi pushed back as the start of school, how much time on learning was that, that, I mean, they assume they deducted that from the total, I hope.
So, yeah, they, they deducted, they reduced the requirement for this year, time on learning. Everything was, it was 990 for high school every year, in a typical year, 900 for elementary in a typical year. I forget exactly what it is for high school, but, and it, but they're both less. I can come back to you with those specifics. But they did reduce them to make way for that, those 10 days at the beginning of the year.
So other than that, we're still required, like districts, all districts are required to provide that same time on learning pre-COVID?
Yes, yep. It's, you know, it's the law, that's, that law, state reg 603, section 27. There's a link in the PowerPoint for you, if you want to look it up. That's the kind of stuff I read.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, thanks very much, Ms. Arnold. Appreciate your, your work and your presentation. Okay, now moving forward on the agenda, this is the first of two opportunities for public comment. If you do have a comment, please raise your hand using the functionality on Zoom and we will attempt to recognize you and call on you. In terms of identification, for the record, again, we generally ask for your name and address. If you're not comfortable, please identify your name and what school you have affiliation with, whether it be a teacher and/or a student. Again, we have a note taker, and the note taker needs to provide that information to make it easier for her. So with that being said, Alexa Houghton.
I apologize, trying to unmute there. Alexa Houghton, 28 Hatchet Rock Road. I have a student in the high school and one in Hathaway. I just wanted to say that although I'm sad to hear that we've not yet found the right person for the DEI position, I am thrilled to hear that the commitment to moving forward with the search. I wanted to say thank you to Superintendent Burkhead and to Ms. Miranda Lee and Ms. Limblom and the hiring committee and the school committee for all of your hard work so far. I did have one question. In the interim, I was wondering what work would be happening in the schools along the lines of DEI? Is there still a consultant working with the schools? I know we had somebody earlier, I didn't know if that was continuing. And that is my only comment.
Superintendent Burkhead, would you mind just giving a very brief overview of what's currently happening in relation to the DEI?
Yeah, sure. And thank you for your support, Ms. Houghton, and a great question. Because we did say the work's continuing. As far as the training goes, yeah, we've committed to a consultant. We've had three, and tomorrow, I believe, is our fourth. Our leadership, department chairs, coordinators, principals, assistant principals, leadership team. Our leadership, department chairs, coordinators, principals, assistant principals, leadership team and central office are all receiving DEI training through Dr. Khaleesi Warham. She's pretty reputable in this area and, you know, personally, in the three trainings I have had, I've had a lot of self reflection and learning with that. And we're also looking at this time to possibly get our teachers a few hours this year instead of waiting till next year and that's hopefully in the works. We're we're starting off with the administrative team and the, I know the high school has done some work with consultant with one of their faculty meetings. Mr. Jamil Adams, who's been with the school a few years now, and so he's worked with it with high school staff. So at least in professional development and training, yet the answer is yes, that's well underway and happening and all the and with our central office staff and the high school staff at this point.
Great, thank you. Next up for public comment is Jean Schildneck.
Hi, Jean Schildneck, 511 Hathaway Road. I actually have the exact same list of questions and and comments as as Alexa. Really sorry to hear that the that it was a failed search for the DEI director, but hopeful that the school committee and the administration will be moving forward expeditionally, expeditiously, and will have a successful hire in the near future. And yes, again, thank you for all the work that has been done and confident that that it will move forward in a good direction. Had the same question about what what are we, what are we doing in terms of using the consultants in the interim? And so thank you, Mr. Burkhead, for providing that. Is there, is there anything that's happening right now to support the students, especially given what has, what happened in Washington last last week? Is there any, any support that's being given to them and are the consultants supporting that that work at all?
Mr. Burke, I know you mentioned briefly in your leadership reports, anything else you could add to that regarding the most recent incidents and the support in the schools?
Yeah, thank you. It's a great question. And, you know, I would like to give our principals and department chairs and coordinators a lot of credit. They were on the ball collecting in Ms. Arnold and, you know, they were collecting resources right as it was happening, knowing that we were going to have to talk about this and should talk about this in school the following day, age appropriate resources for our teachers and had that out that evening with, and then principals reached out to each of their staff with those supports. We also shared something with with families at home, excuse me, with some resources and resource and how to talk to kids about violence and that type of thing. So we were very well prepared and the teachers stepped up to the plate on a night's notice and you know, in in COVID, I think they've become the word I use with our staff is resilient. They're, you know, they're remote, first of all, and then they get this that they have to deal with. But again, our leadership had had some resources ready. I know our teachers had their own resources as well, but they were prepared going into that next day in following days to have conversations with the children at age appropriate level. So I just want to thank everybody that was put into action and we're we're ready for that type of thing in this day and age to, no matter what's thrown at us, we'll organize and we're working 24/7. Like you said, it's not just me, it's it's all of us. It's teachers, it's custodians, it's bus drivers, cafeteria workers, our professionals. I'm so impressed with, you know, the amount of commitment that, you know, some people think, well, we're working remote, we're at our home. You're actually putting more hours in when you're at home because you're constantly at the whim of your email and and the events that happen during the course of the course of the day. But that's our commitment. If we want to be the best in the world, we, you know, we we want to provide that support for kids, especially when they're home remote and the parents are doing, you know, a lot of legwork at home in this situation. We understand that. So we'll continue to be ready and prepared, but we have good people doing that work.
All right, thanks. I just want to remind the public again, this is difficult. This is a public comment portion of our school committee meeting. It's generally not a question and answer session. I know it's difficult. I'll do my best to facilitate and and direct you to get the answers you need. The the few questions that have been asked, I thought were appropriate. But I, but generally, this is not a Q and A, it's not the appropriate spot to ask questions. Generally, it's more of a comment so that we can hear your your concerns. With that being said, the next I have a screen name is the Doherty's. I'm going to ask you to unmute and state your name and address.
Hey, I'm Connor. I live at Connor Doherty. I live at 603 Country Way. I just want to echo Alexi and Jean. Thank you to the hiring committee and to Mr. Burkhead for your commitment to this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Skip here. We're going to go to Jennifer Crandall.
Hi, I'm Jennifer DeBarra Crandall of 55 Jackson Road in Situate. And I'm speaking on behalf of Situate Friends of Metco. I'm the co-chair along with Angela Williams. Friends of Situate Metco is a diverse, all volunteer group of students, parents, teachers and friends of the Situate Public Schools who support and advocate for Situate's Metco program. Metco, a voluntary program to reduce racial isolation and segregation in greater Boston by integrating Boston resident students into suburban schools has been an essential part of the Situate Public Schools for more than 50 years. However, Metco is just one aspect of successful racial integration. Friends of Situate Metco consider the school committee's anti-racism resolution, the hiring of a DEI director and other recent DEI initiatives to be critical to the district's integration efforts and to support the district's mission to graduate well-rounded global citizens with the skills, passion and confidence to make a positive impact on our world. All students in the Situate Public Schools, including both Situate and Boston residents, will benefit from a focused effort to support successful school integration, including advocacy for racial equity, positive school climate for all and engagement of all youth and families. We see firsthand the need for these initiatives in the Situate Public Schools. It is our hope that the commitment to anti-racism, equity and improved school climate demonstrated by these efforts will be sustained and strengthened with the hiring of a DEI director. We commend the recent actions of the school committee and the school administration to support and enhance DEI within the Situate Public Schools and express our strongest support for these initiatives. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I have two other hands raised and I don't know why they doesn't keep order. I'm going to go with the first one that I saw, so I apologize for going slightly out of order. It's Mark Bukovic. You're up.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Mark Bukovic, 102 Vernon Road. I'm here tonight to speak about my concerns regarding the DEI position and with the delay, hopefully you consider them. After the last meeting, I had conversations with Superintendent Burkhead and Peter Gates, along with an email from Michael Long, and I appreciate how you envision the position being implemented. However, envisioning something and putting a curriculum in writing and then practice are two different things. When you look at other towns that have implemented DEI positions, there's a commonality about what they introduce into the curriculum, and there were elements that I believe are unhealthy and confusing to children. One of those things which I'd like to talk about briefly tonight is gender identity theory. My objection to teaching this to children, especially preteen children, is threefold. I believe it's age inappropriate. I believe it's unhealthy and confusing to children. And most of all, I believe it oversteps parental rights and family values. Gender identity theory teaches taking a child and telling them regardless of their body, they can be a boy, a girl, anything on the non-binary spectrum. You're taking children at an age when they're at their most confused, as they will ever be in their lives when their brain's still developing, and confusing them further. When they're at their most impressionable, you're putting ideas in their heads. These topics, I believe, should not be introduced as part of our curriculum to children. How does it endanger children? Young children specifically, to me, in a couple ways. Transgenderism as a medical diagnosis is called gender dysphoria. It's identifiable identifiable at an early age with very defined traits. However, recently, with promotion of gender identity in non-binary, they're in schools and the young children specifically, there's been a rise in the percentage of transgender children and teens. I know the term is not endorsed by LGBT groups. However, in studying and trying to figure out the reason for this rise, Brown University School of Public Health Assistant Professor defined it as rapid onset gender identity theory. What she and now others have found is that the characteristics of the new rise are not associated with defined traits of gender dysphoria. It's as in the past, the new traits found, the children and teens are turning this way due to outward stimuli. Specifically, not internal identity issues, but as a coping mechanism for underlying mental issues or social maladjustment. They're using it for peer acceptance and as a form of social identity. Basically, you're taking really young children and putting ideas in kids' heads. Now, I would remind you that as a child doesn't need to live or be an alternative lifestyle person to be marginalized, to have adaptive issues. There are a lot of issues or spectrum on the issue that children face. I'll show you this. I got sent a flag after the last meeting. And then I got that I got a letter with an unreturned address and I got sent a note with no name put on it and nothing. It was to me a peace, love and a more tolerant and understanding 2021. Whoever sent it, thank you. However, we're all here because of our children. That's why we're here. These notes are at best passive aggressive. If you want to send me a note regarding tolerance, I think you should know a little something about me. I have many family members who have identified as gay and I love and embrace them all. I don't want to get, I wrote a lot about that, but I I'm just going to pass by it. My point in stating this is that you don't use the word tolerance and understanding like I have a disregard for the gay community. I don't. A person's sexuality doesn't bother me. I am open, tolerant and an understanding person. I'm not here because I'm intolerant. I'm not here speaking out against gay people, the LGBT community or transgenderism. I'm not advocating advocating to take care of the curriculum. For children or parents who are experiencing gender identity issues, make resources available to them. I'm here speaking about what is appropriate to teach our children. I'm here because I don't believe what you're pushing to have presented to very young, impressionable children should be. I'm here tonight because there are too many unknowns regarding the curriculum. Parents have not been properly informed of what you will be teaching our children. When I think about identity, it has nothing to do with sexuality. And when I think about how you would teach equity and inclusion, it's not through teaching theories endorsed by a specific group of people. You want equity, teach character. Teach young people how to be strong individuals inside so that when life gets tough, they'll be able to overcome adversity. Teach integrity. If you want to teach inclusion, open up someone's heart. Teach compassion and empathy. The curriculum should not focus on sexuality. Instead, you can have a middle school, you can help a middle school child understand their identity without focusing on sexuality. How someone identifies who they are at their core as a person in here for most people has nothing to do with their sexuality. You're entrusted with our most precious possession.
Mr. Bukovic, I'm going to limit you to 20 more seconds.
Okay, let me just go, let me, I'm going to skip through a couple of things. I thought I had five minutes. I apologize. To wrap it all up, what really baffles me is that when you teach all this stuff in in where you are after a child and you introduce them to this in school, it becomes the school's not even going to tell you about what you're doing. It's okay, once you identify as gay and you and you put this stuff in front of impressionable children, you then say your child's gay, you might not be tolerant, I'm not going to tell the parents about it. So I really need you as you move forward with this position to sit here and consider what you're doing. That's an issue to me, that you're going to sit here and and put ideas in impressionable young kids' heads and then not tell parents about them if they identify. There are other things that happen. More people have mental health issues than they are transgendered. And again, I can drive anybody here to a mental health institution. I have people in my family to deal with those issues. And these issues, teaching this to kids that have mental issues, it's not healthy. So again, and I'll wrap it up, 10 more seconds. We send our school to children to get an education, academics and social and emotional learning. I understand that the people who believe in this, that they're doing their best for their child, but what about other people's children's? Do you have any concern for other people's children's? Where's the tolerance in consideration? You take basically good intention words like equity and inclusion, tolerance and understanding and weaponize them so that if you disagree with our opinion, the person got to be bad. I would ask you to give pause, that's all. That the people you're in the community with that are asking you to care about, you're asking them to care about your child, give the same regard for us. What you're teaching, put it out in the curriculum. It shouldn't be taught to young children. You're overstepping parents' rights. You're overstepping parents' family values. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Stacy Alice Jones Carey.
Hi, I'm Stacy Jones Carey. I'm at 708 Country Way and I just wanted to thank the school committee and Superintendent Burkhead for working on getting a DEI hire. I have two children at Gates, one of which is neurodiverse. And he has autism and and VLD and in grammar school, it was hard for him. He was bullied a bit and we did get it addressed eventually through the old superintendent and Dynamo and the special needs coordinator. But and he's had a phenomenal experience at Gates, but I think there's a lot of work to do on tolerance for people that are different. And with him being fully integrated in the school, he goes to the high school next year. And again, we're a little nervous of what his experience will be. But we're hopeful with someone like a DEI coordinator will be able to help children like him and and educate other children in the community and how to understand people with neurodiversities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, actually, Stacy, could you just identify yourself? Sorry, I don't, did you say your address? Stacy?
You did.
Okay, all right. Dina Dre.
Hi. My sound working well, so I'm going to turn off my video. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Dina Dre, Clap Road. I have two children at Situate Public Schools and I attended Situate Public Schools for 13 years, kindergarten through high school. I was also a part of the DEI subcommittee where we helped try to choose a DEI director. And I also want to echo everybody's thanks and gratitude to you guys and especially the superintendent. You guys have been amazing and I'm so happy that we're pushing forward and putting in the work and getting this done. It's so important. And I just wanted to comment, I wasn't able to attend the last Zoom meeting, but I was able to watch it. And as a member of the small minority of people of color community in Situate, I have to say that it was pretty disturbing to see so many of the people that objected and had issues with the DEI director and I'm still a little bit shaken up over some of the comments that were made today in a seven minute rant that we all unfortunately had to sit through. My heart is racing after this week and the events of last week, as a person of color, I have been emotionally exhausted. My family is just going through so much emotionally at this time, including my my young son who is it's his first year in junior high and he's having a very hard time with the the events going on and watching, you know, what we all watched. So that being said, I may not be in the best place emotionally to address some of the comments that were said today. But I do want to say that having grown up in Situate and experienced racism, injustice, discrimination, I have made it my personal goal and my personal mission now that I have bought a home here in my hometown and I'm raising my children in this hometown, that whenever there is racism and prejudice, I'm going to be there. I'm going to be there and I'm going to fight against it. So if there are white people who live in this town who think that because they are the 98% majority, that people of color can be pushed around and marginalized and treated any kind of way, I will be there to ensure you that we're not going anywhere. And I'm going to fight for us. I'm going to fight for all of our children. And if you have a problem with diversity or equity or inclusion, that sounds like a personal issue because we're moving forward and I'm going to be there every step of the way. So like I said, it's been a very emotional, emotional time right now and And I'm just gonna wrap it up because, you know, I think I've said my piece, but thank you all. I really appreciate you.
Thank you. I'm next to call on Rosie Tersha. She wasn't able to raise her hand just because she's a co-host. I'm gonna ask her to unmute herself and identify herself and make her comments.
Hi, I'm Rosie Tersha. As you probably know, I'm a student at SHS. I first just want to say thank you to Dina for sharing. That's very brave of you with everything going on and I really appreciate hearing your voice. I just wanted to say, I'm also very emotional right now, so if I go the wrong direction, I apologize, but I just wanted to say, I'm a student of SHS and I've been a Situate student for my whole life. And there's nothing I would love more than younger students to be taught these things. I'm sorry. And if you want to know why, if you want to have a conversation with me and talk about my experience and what I've seen other people experience, sorry, I'm so willing because I don't think there's, I don't think that you're connecting with the hurt that people go through. Sorry. Like it's very real. And I think things have been said that, I'm so sorry, this is not what I wanted to, but I think things have been said that make it clear that you're not getting it. And that's not necessarily your fault, but the opportunity is there if you want to have a person-to-person conversation and say, look, I'm not getting it. Why are we doing these things? I will talk to you. I will tell you what I have experienced as a student, what I've seen my trans students, sorry, people who I love who are trans, what they've gone through and why this is essential. And I don't mean to cry, sorry. But it's just very close to my heart and I think that, I think that's missing and I think that, I just think that that's something to be very aware of and very aware that when you speak, whether or not you know it, you're speaking to those kids and the things that you say that maybe you don't realize they're very hurtful sometimes. Those go right to the hearts of those students. And I just think that there's something missing and I think that that is compassion. And I think if you need help to develop that compassion, maybe you don't really understand what the experiences have been. I can help in that conversation. So, so sorry for crying on this public record. But I just wanted to put my name out there if you want someone to reach out to, to expand on this. So, thank you. And I'm so sorry for crying.
Thank you, Rosie, for being brave. We appreciate it. Like this puts into perspective exactly why we're, we're doing what we're, what we're trying to do. I'm very proud of you, Rosie. I'm sure everyone who heard you is very, very proud of you.
Thank you. Sorry, I just wanted, I'm like, I'm good. No one worry. Like, don't call my parents. I'm not a mess. I'm okay. Thank you for hearing me out. Thank you.
Very proud.
Rosie.
Thank you for using your voice. All right, next is, again, for some reason it's not staying in order. I'm just gonna go this route. Jackie Thornton.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'm Jackie Thornton. I live at 7 Crescent Avenue, Situate. Thank you so much, Rosie. I just want to say that. I know a little, small, tiny part of, of what you might have gone through these last couple of years and to share that was, was really powerful. Thank you. Yeah, I'm a, I'm a queer person. And when I hear things that could hurt other queer people, I have to say something. I don't always want to say something because I can't encompass every person's experience. I can only encompass my own. But yeah, I think, I just, I just want to say how much I support this position and how critical it is that this person that we hire has a really comprehensive knowledge of LGBTQ issues. Whether it be non-normative gender identity, to, to, to gay identity, because sexuality and gender are very different topics. And I think sometimes people think that if they understand one, they understand the other. And I think that, you know, there's a lot of new information out there that even I didn't know, like three or four years ago. So I graduated from Situate High School in 2016. And I wasn't out in high school because of the bullying that so many kids, that I watched so many kids go through who came out. I was not brave enough to go through that and to deal with that. And the fear that I experienced in high school thinking about coming out, I feel a lot of that right now. So I'll, I'll just say that. I'm not, I'll say that. And I will say that I think there's just education that, that needs to happen for a lot of people. And like Rosie said, I am so happy to like compile resources for people to learn. I am so, that's all I want. I just want to educate people. I want students to have the opportunity to learn. Because it would have changed my life to have some of the information that, that kids could be having as, as middle schoolers, as high schoolers, information that I never had. And I want to remind people that last year, there were dozens and dozens of trans people that were murdered. And it wasn't because of, you know, it, it, it wasn't because, they were murdered. They didn't, they didn't just die. People were unhappy with their identity. And, and that, that, that resulted in violence and violence against them. And that doesn't happen because someone just decides to. It happens because of people that maybe don't have all the right information in front of them from a, from a young age and aren't surrounded by, by love and support and, and empathy. So I want to remind people that. And I also want to remind people that LGBTQ youth are at higher risk for mental health issues and for suicide than any other type of student. That's a fact. The Trevor Project has a lot of really good resources about that. But one that I wanted to point out is that 44% of our transgender students in a, in a survey of, of over 100,000 students, 44% of transgender students thought about suicide in the last year and 35% attempted suicide. That's a third of all of our transgender students that attempted suicide. So I just want to remind people that maybe forget how important these issues are and how heavy they are and why these positions are so, 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 so important. I can't even like begin to talk about how important it is. And I don't want to take up any more time. I know I've already talked too long. Thank you for letting me speak. I hope this reaches somebody and please like feel free to reach out to me if you need to understand or you just want someone to find the information for you. I'm happy to do it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie, for your comments. I think, you know, we continue to see the desire and the, and the need to have this position. It's not even a decision really that, that needs to be made. It's already done. But I really appreciate both you and Rosie up to this point are making comments because it really does get closer to home. Like it's really happening. You guys have lived through it and you can, and you give the perspective that this is happening. So, thank you.
Pete, may I say something to Jackie?
Yes.
Jackie, I don't know you, but as I, I tell all my LBG friends when they come out, I, I just want to say thank you for choosing happiness. And again, I'm very proud of you and, and very proud of Rosie, but mostly for choosing to be happy. And I think that's what you deserve.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, moving on, Ira Zusti.
Hi, my name is Ira Zusti. I'm a junior at the high school currently. 14 Egypt Ridge is my address. I'd like to thank everyone for putting this meeting together. Times are especially hard with everything going on. Not only the virus and learning online for us students and parents and everyone in the town, but to especially hear people in our community and town right now with these opinions. I, I respect that people have different opinions, but I would like to, to, I'm sorry, I'm a bit emotional. At our school right now, I'm just going to, to kind of speak as, because I'm a student, I'm going to speak more about our school. At our school currently, what we've been working on with both the Advisory Student Council and students and together, we're trying to make our school united. We're trying to make it feel like a community. And to hear these, these, on two different ends of the spectrum, to hear these two different opinions is heartbreaking and angering and it brings me fear and anger and so much. I could go on, I could go on about this for so long, but I'd like to thank Rosie and Dina for talking because they really hit it on the spot. We're trying, one of our projects that we've been working on with the Advisory Student Council is to make the freshmen feel more included because, and no matter of their religion, no matter of their race, no matter of their sexual orientation, we're trying to make everyone feel united. And I encourage people to go out and educate and to have conversations. I'm always available to have these conversations as are countless high school students. And I think having these conversations and talking with people and educating oneself is important. So we just don't go out and just say, saying you have someone gay in your family doesn't simply make you not, not hate on the gay community. Saying, it's just, I, I'm gonna end it there because I've been kind of rambling on. But I just encourage people to educate themselves and to have these conversations. There are so many people available to have these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ira. And again, from, from my perspective as a parent and as a school committee member, it is so, it is so great to have you guys, the students who are experiencing this, to be involved in the solution. And that's really the way that we're, we can hire a DEI, we are gonna hire a DEI coordinator, but it's really the students who are ultimately going to solve this. So we appreciate your efforts and your understanding and concerns for, for creating a welcoming and inclusive environment. So thank you. Chloe Vitale. Chloe? I think we lost her. I'm gonna move on to Carrie Burkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. I'm Carrie Burkowski at 12 Border Street. I have three kids at Hathaway Elementary School. Honestly, I wasn't planning to talk or say anything tonight. I was disappointed but hopeful with regard to the announcement about the DEI director and, and I'm really hopeful that, you know, someone will come on board soon. I think in the meantime, I understand that the schools and the leadership are doing a lot internally to continue this work. I would like to comment however, that I think it would be really important for the school committee as you think about your own sort of guidelines and policies for running these meetings. I think we need to think seriously about group norms and civility within our meetings. I understand fully that there's an opportunity for public comments and there are First Amendment issues, but I do not believe that people should be made to endure the kinds of language that is being used by people on this call. I mean, calling, I am a gay woman in a same-sex marriage with three little kids and they know that being gay and identifying as gay is not a mental illness. It is not an alternative lifestyle. It is who I am as a person. And I am happy to have conversations about these issues, but we as adults need to learn the appropriate language to speak to other people in this town. Shame on us for using language that has been outdated for years and calling being transgender a mental illness. That was taken out of the DSM a long time ago. So we need to educate our, our adults. I mean, our youth who spoke tonight, Dina, has kids in the schools. Thank you for being brave. Jackie and Rosie and Chloe, I'm so happy to hear our students speaking out and talking about their own pain. And shame on us as adults for not knowing the appropriate language and how to have these conversations. Don't you dare sit on this call and tell me in a public comment that you're tolerant or you have a friend who's gay, so that makes you what? You understand what I go through? You don't. You don't understand the discrimination I have faced my entire life. And if you want to speak to me, speak to me with respect and don't tell me that I need to visit a mental illness, need mental illness assistance or therapy. Shame on you. And I really strongly encourage the, the school committee as we wait for the DEI director to consider group norms and to figure out how to educate ourselves on when we have public comments, how to speak to each other and to express our different opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, just in response to that, I think that, I think that is reasonable to potentially set group norms. We did make the, satisfy our goal of creating protocols, which did not necessarily address the type of language that's used. I'm not sure, again, might have, we have to look into that. I don't necessarily think it's out of the realm. It's something we may look into, but as of this point, we do just have those protocols which allow for public comment and don't necessarily express how that public comment is to be made or shortened. So we'll put it on the to-do list, but I'm not, I kind of want to promise that anything is necessarily gonna be done because there probably are some legal issues involved, but we respect your opinion and recognize the, the inappropriate language that was used at this meeting.
Peter, I'll do it. I'll look into it, make sure that it's all sorted out 100%. Carrie, I apologize that you and everybody else on this call had to experience those feelings and turn up motions in a school committee meeting. It's not okay at all. So I will 100%, I've done research on it before for us and I don't want to misstep on this. So I will absolutely do the work to make sure next time we are 100% where we need to be.
Thank you.
Attorney General, just to outline it, I'll call the Attorney General's hotline again and consult with mask.
Thank you, Ms. Brainley.
No problem.
All right, Chloe, we're gonna try you again, okay?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, so my name's Chloe Vitale. I am an SHS senior. I'm one of the co-organizers and co-founders of BLM Situate and I live at 14 Labs Way. So I just, for a really long time, I want to say since my, my sophomore year, I feel like there's been a lot of times where students have gone unheard in our school district. And there's, have been a lot of students who have really, really tried to make their voices heard, whether it's about issues concerning DEI or other issues, and it hasn't worked. And I just want to say how grateful I am that at this point, like adults are finally listening to us. And it just means a lot to me and other students who have been wanting to see this change. And, you know, when it comes to parents and outside sources, even teachers and administrators like objecting to this work, I just really think that students, because of the fact that we go to school every day, we are in that environment every day and we experience what goes on every day, we have the best perspective. And I feel like the fact that there's such a disrespect from some people about what students experience and about how, you know, someone's belief may trump that experience, really upsets me. Because, you know, I go to school and I witness sexism and homophobia and racism on a daily basis. And it's really painful and it can be really toxic. And it's been toxic to myself. It's been toxic to my peers. It's been toxic to alumni. And there are many, many people who can attest to that. There's an entire Instagram account talking about experiences that people have had at Situate that have caused them pain and hurt that could have been prevented had we had systems in place like DEI. And some of them, of course, were a really long time ago, but some of them were last year and some of them were this year. And it's just really painful to see people objecting to diversity, equity and inclusion work. Like what about those, to me, I, you know, I ask myself this question of what about those words is so threatening or so confusing to you? Because to me, that sounds like what we should all strive for. And it's just really unfortunate that there is such a disconnect and such a misunderstanding between, you know, student experiences and the goal, the actual goals of DEI because it benefits everyone and it benefits everyone to be in a diverse, equitable and inclusive community. Thank you.
I think this committee and the district agree with you, Chloe. Thank you. All right, that's gonna be the end of our first public comment. Move on to, on the agenda. This is under new business, Situit High School Program of Studies, Ms. Rundle.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Kind of hard to follow that public comments section by us. I'm here to discuss and bring to your attention changes to the program of studies for the 2021-2022 school year. I did share with you an executive summary that outlines all of the changes. But what I would like to do is just share my screen so you can see the changes. Now just run through them as quickly as I as I can. Just stay with me for a second. Could everybody see that?
Not yet.
Not yet? No, no, that's not good.
Amy, is it on? There you go. Here we go.
There we go. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. So I want to say, I wanted to give a shout out and a thank you to the secondary department chairs as also Lisa Maguire and Michelle Boebert for contributing to this program of studies. We are excited. One of the courses that we would like to add next year would be an RTI seminar course that would provide students additional skill building for effective core learning and executive functioning. This would be a Sinister-based course that would, students would be identified through our student support team process. So this is for this class that students would sign up for, but students would be identified through our administrative team and student support team, RTI process to help give those students additional regular education support in the classroom. That was one course that I wanted to share with you. A lot of other minor changes. English Department, the Literature to Film class has been redesigned as Film as Literature, which represents a greater focus on reading, film techniques, and critical analysis. No changes to the Family and Consumer Science classes. Minor changes to the Fine and Performing Arts prerequisite requirements. But we did remove the Graphic Design and Yearbook Production class that has been that has been in our program of studies for the past few years. This will be supported through an extracurricular activity moving forward as opposed to a year-long class in art. Minor changes to music, health education, there's a minor update to the ninth and tenth health class in the course description to reflect spiral approach for the health topics that are facing students today, including stress management, peer pressure, substance misuse, and relationships. No changes in social studies or history, minor changes in math to reflect the continued implementation of geometry for ninth grade, which we implemented last year. In the science department, they wanted to, they asked to remove the distinction between core and elective courses as all courses have been, are all lab-based courses and all students are able to elect which course they want to enroll with, enroll in, starting in the 10th grade. You will remember that freshmen all take our biology class to prepare for the science MCAS, but starting in 10th grade, students have the option to take a number of different classes and they are all lab-based. Science, Engineering, and Technology, just some updates in the names of the engineering courses and the robotics courses to better clarify the learning targets of those courses. One of the changes we did make in our special education program is that we changed the Applied English Language Arts Course into two separate courses. So there will be a Level One and an Applied Level, ELA Level Two class to recognize the expansion of the IXL program into two cohorts based on age and level. And we've also done that in our math program as well, so there'll be Applied ELA Level One, Applied Math Level One, and also Applied ELA Level Two and Applied Math Level Two for our students in our IXL. And then the last changes have to do with our World Languages Department. Every other year, we switch, every year we switch our, our our continuation of French and Spanish. So this year, we will be replacing our French Four and Five Francophonie now with French Four and Five Culture Through Film. And we'll also be replacing our Spanish Four and Five Mondo 21 with Spanish Four and Five Culture Through Film. That just means that every year, students have the opportunity to do the Culture Through Film class one year and then take the alternative class the following year. We've eliminated the two courses that we had in the program of studies last year, the Introduction to Greek, and we eliminated the IBS class. And then we did add the Seal of Biliteracy to the course description and we added proficiency levels to the course names that classes will be designated in the program of studies as saying intermediate, novice, higher level, just to help students with their designation for their courses. And I do have Kate Shula here tonight. She's the department chair for World Language. If you had any questions about the Biliteracy program, that will be in the program of studies next year. So those are the major changes. And I do, I did send all of you a copy of the draft program of studies to be at your convenience. And I'm hoping to get a vote on it for the next school committee. So I open it up to questions if you have any.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments by the committee?
I have just two questions.
Okay, go ahead, Slim Bob.
So is there gonna be a graphic design class offered to the students? Or is that like that Yearbook One, just specific to the Yearbook, that graphic design class?
The Graphic Design Yearbook Production Class will not, will not run next year, so there will not be a Graphic Design class. That will be a lot.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think my next question, I've always wanted to ask this, so maybe Ms. Shula can answer. What is Francophonie?
I think that means, well, I'll leave that to Kate. Kate, are you there? I don't know if she's still on the, on the call. I think Francophonie is another word for French.
Okay, well.
But I will find out.
Okay, I've always wondered that, so. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Well, there we go. I was unmuted. Can you hear me now so I can answer? So Francophonie has to do with French-speaking, so those are the French-speaking countries. So that course travels to a variety of different French-speaking countries to study the culture, the literature, the music, the cuisine, all sorts of things.
Oh, so that's the the trip.
Well, we do like virtual trips. That is not, the course itself is not affiliated with a specific school-sponsored trip. But we want the classroom experience to feel like that, so students will do a unit on Belgium, they'll do a unit on France. But Francophonie means French-speaking.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
I had a few questions, Pete, if Janice is done.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike. I'm all set.
Janice, I'm sorry, I mean, Tammy, I got, I'm sorry, I got distracted when you gave your answer on graphic arts. Could you say that again, please?
Sure. So the graphic arts, the Graphic Design Yearbook Production Class will not run as a four-credit course next year. It's going to be, the Yearbook Production will take place after school as an extra, as an extra activity.
Okay, so is there any graphic arts or graphic production classes offered at all?
Graphic design, no.
Okay.
No.
My second question, if you don't mind, could you put your presentation back up on the screen for a second?
Oh.
And and go back down to the language section.
I'm sorry, yeah.
You can go a little lower.
Yeah, it's not, my computer is, there we go. Is that better? Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I'm concerned and I wonder what the thought processes behind eliminating ancient ideas. Is it lack of participation or was there some other reason for eliminating that?
I'm gonna let Kate answer that question. Is Kate available? Is she muted?
Oh, I can ask her to unmute.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, there seems to be some confusion with with being able to unmute yourself.
You have to make it a co-host.
Oh, okay, I, that's okay. I just, okay, I think it's good now. So what we did last year, we had a teacher that was willing to sort of expand our course offerings in our classical languages programming. So he and I worked together to design two additional courses we can include in our program of studies. We floated it out there last year as a trial, just to see what interest would look like, what the numbers would look like. And we did not have enough interest to run the courses. So I made the decision this year to remove those courses from the program of studies just based off of a year of floating them out there to staff and students. We are seeing a little bit of a decline in the classical language enrollment, starting in our sixth-grade programming. So this is based on data from course registrations at the high school last year, but then looking more holistically at data six through 12.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Kate.
Sure.
And I guess I had a couple of more questions to Tammy or.
You're good. You're okay, Mr. Hayes.
I remember last year we had a fairly long discussion regarding the excellent art program that we have and the need for more, whether it's art sections, art classes. And I wonder where that discussion has led in the last year and where we stand on that.
We did, I think last, the last year is when we talked about the program of studies, we divided the AP classes. So it wasn't just AP Studio Art, we designated AP Studio Drawing. There's an AP Studio 2D class, 3D class, and also 2D. So there's 2D, 3D, and Drawing. We also added a Honors Portfolio class, a full-year class, to allow students the opportunity who may have, who need additional time to complete their their portfolios for college. So we did add a couple of those.
What is the the high school administration's position on the sufficiency of our program offerings? We have awesome teachers, but what, is there an opinion as to whether we should, that we have enough offerings or whether we would hope to strive for more or or what?
Well, one of the reasons we decided not to run the Graphic Design Yearbook class next, last year because it was the low enrollment, but we can use that teacher to provide additional courses to allow more students to enroll in them. We do have a lot of students that request our art classes. And we do have, as you remember, we put a a four-credit reg, graduation requirement for our finance requirement, we put that in in our graduation requirement a few years ago.
Okay.
And so we have increased the number enrollment in the course, in the courses, so that more students can take them. So we are working out, working out, working with Jim Thomas and the art teachers to allow more teachers, more students into those classes.
Okay, I had one other question. Again, it's related to the elimination of ancient ideas and not specifically regarding its elimination in in world language, because I understand that. I am interested in if at some point before we vote on the change on the course of studies, I'd like to get some feedback from the, from History Department regarding the where in our course of studies, and if it's in history or wherever it is, is the emphasis on classical thought, whether it's taught in English or history, because I think especially where the world stands right now, I'm interested in knowing exactly what we offer as to teach children classical thought, ethics, morals, which have been the basis of our our civilization, number one, and especially our government. Over the last year, they're all derived from the classical thoughts. And so I'd like to know where we are on that.
Okay, I can look, I will talk to Mr. Swett and Mr. Scopelletti and Jen Arles about that.
That'd be great. Thank you, Tammy.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thanks, Mike. I think that's an important topic that you brought up in terms of how those things are addressed. So I think that that's something to look, to look forward to, to see how we're addressing it. Any other questions by the committee on the changes? We're not gonna vote on this until our next meeting. This is the first run-through. There's no other question. I just have one generic question for you, Ms. Rundle. To what degree, if any, has the pandemic had on any of these off, any of these changes? Meaning, the way that we're teaching things, has that resulted in any of these additions and or contractions? Doesn't appear as if it's the case, I'm just curious.
I think what happened is we had a lot of changes last year. I don't know if you recall, we had several additional English collective that we weren't able to run this year. I think we tried to keep everything before we just trying to keep everything status quo for this year because of the pandemic. That answers your question.
Yeah, no, I think that, yeah, no, I think based upon the change that we made, very minimal ones, I think it's just basically what you and Ms. Shula said, is that it's just, it's really a function of demand. You know, we're taking courses to make them available to those students that need them, but if there's not enough, then we need to change it, so.
Right, right.
That's good. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on the agenda, Communication of the Situit School District App rollout, Ms. Matthews.
Hi there.
Hi.
I'm going to share my screen. And I need to make sure that I share with audio.
You click the share screen and then in the bottom left-hand corner, there's a little option that says.
Share sound.
You got it.
Great, thank you. Okay, I hope I get it right the first time. Okay, I'm just going to present this. I'm Emily Matthews and I'm the Technical Director for Situit Public Schools, which is different from IT, but part of that work this year has been to work on the Situit Public Schools app. So this is our world premiere. I will just cover three things. I'll cover the purpose of our app. I'll give you a tour, a world tour, I guess, if you want to think of it that way, since we have. I'll give you a tour, a world tour, I guess, if you want to think of it that way, since we haven't been traveling much. And then I'll show everybody how to download the app, and it's really easy. So two major purposes of the app was, are to provide even more access to information in a largely mobile world. When we looked at the analytics for the Situate Public Schools website, we found that the majority of people were coming to the website via their mobile device. So this is supposed to simplify that and make the, a lot of the website features more accessible to people on their iPhones or their Androids. And then second is to just generally increase communication for parents, students, Situate Public Schools staff, and community members. So I'm just going to start really quickly. This is what the home screen looks like. There was a version of the app launched a long time ago, and then it kind of went dormant. So that version is old. And should you have that on your phone somehow, make sure that you go to the App Store and look to update any new content, because it will have this appearance instead of, instead of the old look. So I want to go through a tour with you all. And the first area I'm going to focus on is our website linked items that specifically, when you click on them, they link to the Situate Public Schools website. So I'm going to start this.
The first stop on our tour are the Situate, and let me pause it. Did I successfully share sound?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Public Schools website linked items. This includes the lunch menus, COVID-19 resources, school committee agendas and minutes, and the schools themselves. So if I click on one of these, it takes me directly to the mobile version of our website. However, it's within the app, so you don't open your own browser. I simply click back to the app menu by clicking that white arrow in the upper left-hand corner. I can scroll down and open documents. And I can toggle back and forth using the blue arrows at the bottom of the page. That is how we navigate the externally linked items in the app.
All right. And
The first stop on our tour
Now I can't get out of it. Home screen, no. There we go. Sorry about that. By the way, I did, all of these little tours are screen shares that I recorded. I'm not just like a really excellent ventriloquist. It dawned on me that everybody can see my face and my lips aren't moving. So I did have to, I did have to screen record this on my phone first. So we'll move on.
The first stop on our tour are the Situate Public Schools
Sorry about that. Next, we'll, I'll share the calendar section of the app.
Our second stop on the tour of the app is our calendars. So click on 2021 calendar, and it will open up to the PDF, which is also available on our website. What's nice about this is you can zoom right in to whatever month you need to look at and easily access things in a pinch. If we go back to our main menu and click on event calendar settings, this is where, when you first set up your app, you selected the schools that you wanted to receive information about. So open that up if you want to take a look again and see what schools you have selected. So let's go back to our event calendar and take a look at what's in it after we select the schools we want. As you can see, I have two school committee meetings. That's because the default of Situate Public Schools is always included. So you'll always get the district calendar and whatever school calendar you select. In this case, I have two because I have Hatherley Elementary also selected.
All right, let's see if I
Our second stop
I can't get out of it successfully. I'll just have to escape out. And then finally, we have external links on our last stop of the tour. This has been so easy.
The last stop on our app tour are the external links, which include Aspen, the Twitter app, and the SHS athletic schedule. When we click on one of these three, it opens externally into either your browser or an app, depending on what you have on your device. When you want to return to the app, you do have to completely leave the browser that you are in to toggle back into the app.
Okay.
The last on our app tour are the external links, which include Aspen.
Okay.
So the last stop on our app
So any questions before I explain how to download? I know that was a lot of information really quickly, but any questions about those sort of categories I have? I have the Situate Public Schools website linked items, the calendars, and the external links?
Yeah, but I think it's, I think it's great. My question would be, can you see how off or how this is utilized, or if people are actually using it?
We can set up analytics for it. So I've asked a handful of people from central office to download it. And so we can see their analytics. So we know that people are clicking around in it. And I hope that, and my hope is that as people download this and they start to use it, we can reflect on, on the analytics, analytics provided by the app and then, you know, remove stuff, add stuff, and also compare that data with what we see from the website. I really try to match up what we see on the website with what people with what I put on the app. And I also listen to what people talk about and what they say they need. You know, people are asking for, you know, where is that school committee agenda? And so I was like, oh, I'll just add that link to the app. And that way, anybody, you don't have to be a Situate Public Schools parent, but anybody can download the app. And then that way, they can find the agenda easily.
Thank you. Any, any other questions or comments by the school committee?
Nope.
Great. Let me just show you
That's great, Emily. I already downloaded it. It's so easy to use. And you can just, like you said, like you just update your old one if you had the old one, and it like automatically does it for you. So it's great.
I am, good. It is also very easy to download. I, I know that this might feel like, this slide might feel like a little bit much. But I guess maybe I need to get on the Prezi bandwagon. So I made this, I made this presentation instead. But you literally, you go to an app store, any app, the App Store on your phone, you search for Situate Public Schools. It's that simple. You download the app, and it will ask you two questions. It'll ask you to opt in or out, to receive notifications, and then it will ask you to set your location. And the reason it asks to set your location is because the school's link, or the school's button on the app, it has a map inside of it. So if you wanted to drive to that particular school that you selected, that's why it asks for your location. And then finally, the brief setup is to select the schools that you want calendar updates from. So, so that's it. This is my official thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, I appreciate it. I think that, in my perspective, I had always had the app, but it was not useful at all. So I'm hoping that this is, and I still feel that we're held a little bit hostage to the functionality of our website in terms of what we can really do with this app. But as far as what our capabilities are, where you've done a great job with what those are. But I'm hoping that at some point in the future, we'll have a, you know, more useful website as well.
Yeah, thank you. And you're right, some of the functionality is limited. But I think overall, people are going to appreciate what we can offer for now.
Right. Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Gates, Mike?
Yes.
Big comment?
Yes, Superintendent Burkhead.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Emily for all her hard work. It's, I'm a happy and proud user of the app. It's very user-friendly. We all have phones nowadays, and you're not in front of your computer. You can just go on there, and it's very user-friendly. The software that we're using is not so user-friendly, so Emily's had to do a lot of workarounds on her own time. So if there is something that's not working, please let us know. And Emily's been great at fixing that up. We want people to use it. One of our focuses this year was on working on our website, and this app was a bonus. As we know, they're user-friendly and an alternative to the website if you can't do that. But I will also say that the website has transformed considerably also under Emily's guidance and work on it. And a shout-out to Kim Peters, too, has worked closely with Emily behind the scenes to really make it a lot more user-friendly. So just wanted to thank Emily for all her hard work, and I love the app. I'm sure more people will. So I just highly recommend it for everyone to give a try and share your feedback with us. Thank you.
And Emily, while you were giving that presentation, I just connected. Wow, Mike, that is amazing.
First try.
Welcome to 2021. Thank you, Emily. Glad you could join us.
My work here is done.
Well, did it, Emily, you did it.
I'm so happy to connect with you on that, Mike.
Well, it's, it's just, I never bothered to try to get it, get the public schools on my iPhone until now.
All right. All right, moving on, 8:45. Wow. The Fiscal Year 22 Capital Plan, Dr. Dutch.
Hello again. So I'd like to present to you the three items that we would like to submit for your approval for capital plan. There were three things. The first is the technology request. We're always looking to update our desktops, laptops, student Chromebooks, as well as other hardware and infrastructure. We submit a request each year, anywhere from $100,000 to $150,000. So next year's request is for $100,000 for technology upgrades for our equipment. And so that's the first item. The second item is final phase of replacing the flooring in the high school. We are completing replacing the flooring in the library right now this year. So next year is doing phase two of the three-phase plan. The replacing flooring on the second floor of the high school. They're in rough shape. We're replacing them with the same low maintenance flooring that's in gates and on the main floors, main corridors of the first floor of the high school. So that's, and that's in an amount of $250,000. And then the last project is to replace the parking lot at the Wampatuck Elementary School, the driveway and parking lots. They are in serious need of repair. They use it for phys ed classes. It'll enhance our ability to remove snow through plowing. If we have snow, we're hoping for no snow. We have an estimate for that project of $303,673. That's a year old now. So hopefully, that's still a good number for next year as we move forward. So I'm looking for your approval of these three capital items. Welcome, any questions you might have?
Any questions by the committee? Nothing? Mr. Hayes?
No, we have capital plan tomorrow and the next night, so.
Okay. You'll see how these look.
Bob, you'll be there. You'll be, you'll be zooming, right?
Sure, yep.
Yep. Nicole might, and Bill might, so.
Okay. Bob, just, does is the Wampatuck paving, is it just the main parking lot, or is it both? There's kind of two parking lots, like a little parking lot to the south, and then the larger one. Is it just the bigger one, do you know?
I'm going to pull up the, I'm going to share the screen again if I can, just to show you. So you can see everything that's being done. It's a lot of sub-level work as well. And it is, it's the entire parking area as well, in the front and back side.
Okay. But this is a quote from last year?
Yes, this quote. Yeah, I don't have the date on here, but this is a quote from last year.
Okay.
I mean, that's a lot of feat. I think it's the whole thing, Pete.
Yeah.
On Wampatuck, there's like the, the one, it's like the big rectangle on the, as you look at it to the left side. And then there's kind of like that longer driveway over to the right.
It includes, it includes all of that.
It's all of that, yes.
Okay. If there's no other questions, entertain a motion on the capital plan requests.
I'll move that the school committee approved the capital plan request as presented.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Ms. Limblom. Roll call vote, Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Brandeling?
Yes.
Gates is a yes, Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
And Ms. Limblom?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. Good luck to Superintendent Burkhead and Dr. Dutch in presenting those items to the town. Hopefully, they are in support.
They've already been presented, Pete, and I think there's one tomorrow night, I believe there's one town capital plan item that's going to be discussed, and then the following night, the whole thing will be voted, so.
Okay.
We've been through the high school.
They're already that, they're already that far forward on it all, really?
Oh, they've been working, yeah, it's, they've been pushing fast on it.
Okay. All right, good. All right, moving forward in the agenda. This is the second and final opportunity for public comment. Just prefaced by saying, please, for those, this is mainly an opportunity for those who have not yet spoke.
I think we lost you for a minute.
Seeing none. Seeing none, we will move on. All right, we have the agenda acceptance of minutes. Are there August 31st minutes in the backup? I did not have an opportunity. Let me see. Apparently, they were, I think we were supposed to vote them last meeting, and we did not. That was my fault. But they're here, August 31st, 2020 minutes. If I have a motion.
I'll move to approve the August 31st, 2020 minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Long, second by Mr. Hayes. Roll call vote, Ms. Motion by Mr. Long, second by Mr. Hayes. Roll call vote, Ms. Brandalining?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblom?
Yes.
Gates is yes. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Great, thank you. We're getting there, Jeannie. We're getting there. Okay, moving on, subcommittee reports. Does anyone have, I have two quick ones, although Dr. Dutch stole my thunder on one, but any subcommittee updates? Nothing. All right. I guess Mr. Hayes will have some after the capital plan, right? Yes. All right, so I just quickly, Dr. Dutch really reviewed everything, but just to give the committee an update that Mr. Hayes and I met with Dr. Dutch and Bill Burkhead earlier in December, just to go over the, the current budget. And he basically delivered today, everything that we talked about. But that was just kind of a, a quick look into it to see if we had any issues. And if there were, we would have brought them the attention of the school committee. But he reviewed everything and again, highlighted items are really that we aren't collecting fees for ECC buses and obviously full day K that's been reimbursed. Those were the hot topics and we'll hope that we get the CARES Act money in. I'm probably the more item or the other committee that isn't really a subcommittee. As you guys all know, as I state regularly, it's my goal as a chair to work more effectively and more collaboratively with the town. As a result, really using the, the town charter review as an impetus to get together. Ms. Brandalining has been working diligently on that subcommittee. They really spent a lot of time on, on the school side of things and, and I don't think they really understand how things work. So using that as a, I guess, impetus that you already used, we got together with the selectmen to discuss some things relative to the charter. And what we were talking about primarily was school building maintenance, the process and the budget, school grounds maintenance and most relevant as of recent are the memorial sites. So we talked about all of those things. We had some takeaways and we will plan, we plan now to meet monthly between myself and one, one other member of this, member of the school committee, as well as two members of the select board, in addition to Mr. Bedrow and Superintendent Burkhead. It is my plan to include the most appropriate school committee member at that meeting. Since we were talking about charter review items, Ms. Brandalining was present at those meetings. As those agendas potentially change, I may be asking others to attend. But again, we can only have two of us there so that we don't have a quorum. But I think that it was a great first step. I think that we really just discussed some basic things that just need to be smoothed out and we can figure out how to effectively manage the, the schools both inside and out. That's all that I had for my subcommittee updates. Nothing else? All right.
Is Emily still with us?
Emily, you there?
Hello.
Having trouble, Mike?
How can I help, Mike?
I could, you don't, do you mind if I, I know Mike Long has it and probably everybody else has it, but maybe you could help me with getting my, my kays@sit.org email on my iPhone, which I haven't figured out how to do yet, so.
I would love to help you set that up.
I'll call you if I can.
I would love to work with you on that, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward on the agenda corresponds, I don't believe we had any. Dr. Dutch is next up, third time on the agenda. Warrants.
We've got warrants to go over. The first one is warrant S201231 signed by Ms. Lindblom. The total amount was $143,708.20. Just again, the big ticket items, private school tuition, $23,298. Contract services for heat, $32,102.12. Those were for repairs to the heating and ventilation system. Contract service other, $46,285. Again, those are repairs to our HVAC system. And those are the only large items on that particular warrant. The second warrant is S210107. The total is $224,846.85. Big ticket items, private school tuition, $108,440.88. Utilities are gas, $51,017.68. Again, contract services other, $43,125. Still repairs to the HVAC systems. And those are only large ticket items that we've submitted in those two warrants. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. Just to, and to follow up, these are, these are later in the, in the process for COVID reimbursement. Mr. Gates, these are the kinds of things that may not get reimbursed because of the timelines that they're on.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Dutch? It's his third and final agenda item.
Well, when are we going to see the Bob Dutch t-shirts on a, on a invoice soon that we can all buy?
You'll have to talk to somebody else about that.
Can I make a quick comment, Jim and Gates?
Yes.
Because I'm getting a lot of pressure from the fan club too, that Dr. Dutch needs more time. Just remind me next year that on National Championship College Football Night, which I'm a fan, that we don't put Dr. Dutch on three times. Also, also, I'm concerned, I'm concerned that that open door behind him, that somebody's going to come out and grab him, so. Like a horror movie.
Oh yeah, it's a, you're talking about the national football.
No.
College.
Alabama, Ohio State for all you college football fans.
Probably just kicked off, right?
Yeah, we'll be fine. We'll, we'll make it in plenty of time.
No, it's actually, no, it's already the second quarter.
All right, plenty, plenty of time. We'll make it.
All right, all right. Anything else? Any other business? And next meeting is, I'm showing January 25th. If no other comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at 9:01.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Long. Roll call vote, Gates, yes. Brandalining?
Yes.
Lindblom?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Long?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 9:01. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.